Couple of things, we are pulling out number eighteen. And number nineteen, we're gonna bring up to eight point five Barrett to help you here get that done. Other than that, I don't know of any other changes unless you guys are aware of anything else that I'm not aware of.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second? Sarah has a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, she carries consent agenda out. Any last minute changes on there guys that I was need to be aware of or everything's as is? Brett and I'll assume everything is, nothing's changed on there since.
Nothing's changed.
Does anybody have any questions on that or? Now look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to accept.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second? Julie makes a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, Carrie use minutes from the last meeting, any changes or corrections? Guess I didn't see anything but. Now look for a motion to accept the minutes, unless somebody's got something to do.
Motion to accept the minutes from last meeting?
Second.
Makes a motion, Chelsea does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion Carrie, okay, public comment, anybody got anything they wanna talk about tonight?
I do.
Okay, grab the microphone, introduce yourself please.
Merle Bailey, I'm curious what the speed limit is on the frontage road in the industrial park off one hundredth avenue?
Jim, you know?
Twenty-five miles an hour.
I think it's standard twenty-five.
Yeah.
People don't drive twenty-five miles an hour under. There's people driving down that road that are matching the speed of the people on the road and the dust is second to none. There's constant trucks up and down day after day. They're continuously hauling dirt and is there a policy in town on weed control?
Yep, yes there is.
Well, they are growing thistles across the road from me like no tomorrow and dandelions. And I've tried to contain this stuff for long enough. And where the city's going with special assessments, are they trying to run the ag people out of Horace?
No, that's not the, I mean, the developers are the ones that are purchasing the land, it's not the city.
But the farmers are getting tagged like really high. We pay more on our little property where we're sitting than the construction or landscaping company across the road from us for specials. We're not a business, my parents aren't a business.
Right, so that's one of the things right now, we're going through a process where we're gonna try and reevaluate where we're sitting with specials.
But are they still stuck with the hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar bill?
Yes, 'cause those specials have already been established, that's already been done.
But there was really no talk on this or anything, you guys had the initial meeting in the city shop with a mask on and there was nobody listening. We've tried to approach this in different manners and it's like, nobody really cares.
We had the initial, we've had meetings about this, I mean, yeah, we're trying to expand on this out so we get more information out to folks. And we have been working at that, you know, we're going with what we have to deal with. Lucas, help me out here, it's the state century code is what we start with and then we've been working with more, trying to add more onto that. Is it perfect? No, but that's what we're trying to, so we're going through an exercise right now to see if we can come up with a better plan to execute special assessments when we have to do them.
Well, but at the age of my parents, how are they ever supposed to recoup anything on what you got going on around here? I don't get it.
I think it's a, it's tough because you have a lot of people that do have a lot of farmland that's becoming very valuable to the developers. So, you know, there's a lot of income unfortunately for people like your parents maybe that don't wanna sell. They're having to deal with the added cost of the specials. But there's also the element of the value of the land that's happening out here because this land is in such high demand.
But yet you give tax abatements, why should it cost me for somebody to build a new house?
I think those tax abatements have been in place for how long, forty, thirty years sir?
The tax abatements have been around for at least twenty years roughly, by knowledge if not more.
But there's plenty of people that wanna build out here, it really shouldn't cost a long-term resident money for somebody to build a new house.
We did have that conversation, I think, in the previous meeting and we elected to keep it even after residents discussed the same topic.
So, the people that have lived here forever, do they get a tax abatement?
But they're not subsidizing on this, I mean, that's one of the things we went through last time around. We're not seeing, we're not realizing anything on that tax abatement. You know, it's just something that is, it's been done for twenty years, the city isn't reflecting anything on that obviously right now. And it's been there for twenty years, I think those are things like we're gonna change it and then the new people that come to town are not gonna be able to enjoy what other people have had over the last twenty to twenty-five years at this point. That's what the discussion was, you know, so can it be brought up and talked about again probably, yeah.
Well, see, part of the other thing was is we were originally approached by the city, Terry Hayden was the mayor. To be annexed so Fargo couldn't surround Horace. And then you get special assessments on your land that are like, it's almost fifteen grand a year that my parents are supposed to come up with. At their age, they're retired, that's right off the top of your, basically your pension.
Can I, can I ask as a member, how much land are we talking about here?
About what?
Acres, how, how many acres do they own?
Three quarters of a section, three ninety.
Okay, so three ninety, three quarters of a section, so you bring up a really interesting topic because this is something we're in the process of having discussions on.
Well, we also met with the engineers on this, which is another thing that's kinda puzzling because they told us that it's all buildable. Can we get that in writing? 'Cause grain twenty-seven runs through the property, it's not all buildable, it goes nowhere, it's like.
So you received some conflicting information from a couple of different parties is what you're saying?
Well, we met with the engineers, this isn't just a, a new topic.
We've met, we met prior to the last assessment district and we discussed more or less diversion land, what was the diversion gonna take in that sector?
Well, yeah, but we're still paying specials on it irregardless.
That's what we, that's what was the general nature of our discussion, was how we calculated the special assessment based on equivalent units and then what would happen if the diversion were to buy them all and what would happen with taxes on that.
Okay.
This happened before Christmas, I wanna say, quite a bit before that, I remember when you and your wife came in.
So, a couple of things, I think you brought up some really good topics and we're hearing you. I can tell you three hundred and ninety acres is nothing to sneeze at and you have a sizable valuation in that property.
Well, yeah, and this is my parents and they're retired. You're talking about somebody that's soon to be ninety-two, my mom's eighty-eight. It's not like they wanna run to town for a meeting and stuff, everything that goes on, they get stuff sent to them. They got the diversion authority breathing down their neck 'cause they wanna do a wetland restoration project, which means they're gonna run water uphill to push it into the diversion. Well, we didn't really feel that we should have to pay special assessments on that property, but they did anyway. Unfortunately, I wasn't in town when you had the initial meeting to come here, which is.
It's a, it's a difficult thing.
Well, it sure is, especially at their age, I mean, can you imagine? Somebody tells you that you've, you've been good people your whole life and then all of a sudden you're stuck with this fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollar bill a year for the next twenty-five years. I don't understand how they're ever supposed to recoup any of that, not in their lifetime.
We're in a unique situation with the state that we're in in Horace and please correct me if I'm wrong, with the growth that is coming.
Well, it is, there is growth coming, but here again, it's costing them way more for the growth than it is benefit to them right off the bat. How many years is it gonna take to develop all that, that you're paying for the roundabout on this other side of town, curb and gutter, streetlights, it's like.
I hear you, but those are all.
Well, it's not the easiest thing to explain to somebody that's ninety-one years old.
It isn't, but those are also things that are benefits to our community.
Okay, then how, how does he recoup the funds, okay, they're combining twenty nineteen corn of June of twenty twenty. So, what's your income for the next year? Based on.
Do they have an option to sell acre or to?
Well, unfortunately, my dad would love to see it farmland in his lifetime and then he tells you that he just lived too long, that's.
Oh, that makes me wanna cry.
Well, you and me will. Kim, I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, we do appreciate you coming, I think we can have additional discussion on that.
Well, it's just unfortunate that it comes to this, but I really wish I could've been here a lot sooner for some of these other meetings, but.
I know, I know the.
We also have a life as well, but it's like, we have like about eight acres, we used to have ten acres, we had to sell to expand the highway, sell for turn lane. Okay, now we got our specials on our eight acres is more than A and L landscaping, they're a business, they're running up and down the road with trucks. Employees, it's just my wife and I, well, why are we paying so much?
Okay.
Do you wanna sell off some, well, I know your future plans are light industrial and commercial for where we live, so what are we gonna sell off?
I, I wouldn't say your future plans because the future planning was actually something that was gone through with many, many hundreds of members of our community.
That was the, Horace's future plans.
It is.
We've been looking at all this, it's not like.
And it's a living document, that's something that actually we just discussed here this last week again about taking a second look at that, making sure that it still meets all of the protocols and procedural aspects. Along with the interest of the people in the city of Horace, I think that's very important because things change as development comes, you have different types of people that live here. Your folks are a great example, we have the senior residents that have been here for, you know, fifty plus years, you have people my age, that forty to fifty age group. You have the younger folks that are now moving into Horace, so we have an extremely delicate dynamic that we're trying to cater to. Unfortunately, we're not perfect, but we are doing our best.
Let me ask you this question then, okay, the future plans for the plot that the wetland restoration wants to do, on the north end of it is green space, okay? So, we're paying specials on that as it's all buildable.
My future, where I live, the future plans is commercial use.
Well, I know, but we're paying for everything considered buildable, can I get that in writing?
I think that's a special.
So, when we develop it, I'll just sell that off to the developer, that you guys said it's all buildable so that we could recoup whatever it is that. I just don't see how it is that certain people pay specials upfront before the land's even started developing, I can continue to farm.
Well, and that's part of the reason we're having this review.
Yeah.
Because we need to, we're, we're finding that there are some flaws in the way that this has been done and so we need to go back and revisit it to reevaluate it to make sure that it is in fact fair. And we have brought in a consultant to do so, so it's not just us up here making decisions for everybody, keep in mind, we don't do that and we don't pride ourselves on that. We want input from people and we want input from a consultant, so you start coming here and bringing this to our attention is a big deal and it's something that I've written down, I see several others have notes here. It's something we will discuss with our consultants. I'm sorry we don't have answers for you tonight, but these things do take some time.
We've talked to the governor's office, gramer's office, egg commissioner, tax commissioner, the local district representatives.
Feel like you're not getting anywhere?
Well, not really, it's just like our wrestling with the diversion.
It's a big answer.
For some reason, we missed the flood this year.
Not quite sure how that happened.
I'm okay with that.
We're, we're in the process of a burn ban and a drought in a time where normally we're flooded completely.
These people just move here or what? See, that's part of the problem, I've lived here my whole life.
Okay, alright, Merle, we'll take some of this under advisement, 'cause I said we're gonna, we have another meeting, one is our special assessment, next one.
We don't have the next one scheduled yet, but we are going to do an update later and I don't, or agenda here to talk about where we're at. And we've had a handful of meetings with our.
We got another one coming up, but.
Yeah, we don't have a date set for that next one, 'cause we wanna make sure we have something of substance to be able to say, hey, here's what we have.
Okay, okay, thanks to Kim, Merle, anybody else got any comments they wanna make tonight? Go ahead and grab the microphone, introduce yourself please.
I'm Sue Sunley, I feel like mine's pretty small compared to yours, but we're, we live on Seventy Second Street South and they're developing to the west of our property. And the, like, they loaded the dirt and stuff and it's piled like five feet into our land and I don't know, like, can they do that?
KPH, no.
We learned about this issue late on Friday, we had our field staff take a look at it today, provided some pictures, that surveyor looked at this afternoon and he just called right before the meeting and told me that there was something pushed, pushed off. Brett and I had talked this morning about reaching out with you and your husband and coming up with a plan, meeting with you on site, so I'm taking a look at what it is and coming up with a plan.
Okay, well Jeff has all my information.
We tried to call the school, they didn't realize the school doesn't have, they're positive, so we tried this afternoon and they took us a phone call and all, Brett didn't have school today.
I mean, I just didn't know what are the rules, like, can they do that or?
There is an easement back there, but it's pretty vague easement, it's a five foot easement, so I was telling you, so I think we just meet with you and your husband and we can see what the, what it is and the pathway order is to.
Probably the three neighbors there, not just her.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I believe north and south.
We walked that whole line with the pictures.
There's pictures that have been shared on OneDrive for me.
Yeah.
Do they have the easement marked?
So, the property line is marked with a T, because of.
Okay, yep, yep.
As I was told right before the meeting from the surveyor, so we'll go out and meet with you and take a look.
Yeah, so let's do that, let's have those guys go out and take a look then, see where we're at, okay, you guys do that tomorrow then.
We're, we'll, we'll be in touch with Sue, so.
Yeah, okay, work out the arrangements. Okay, anybody got anything else? Going once, going twice, okay, move on to the sheriff's report, Ross, you're up.
Evening, everybody, let's run through the report really quick, calls for service are about where they usually are this time of year, one hundred, one hundred and thirty-seven. Nothing really extraordinary in there, eight animal calls is a little high, but it's loose dogs, cabin fever for puppies is pretty high this time of year. In the paragraph I wrote below, I kinda put a little bit about sort of see something, say something, neighborhood watch style. People in town here do a great job of giving us a call, calling dispatcher, it's just me and Craig giving us a text saying, hey, something weird just happened or there's someone jumping by my house at two in the morning. Me being on nights now, I get a lot of those texts and calls and, but for every person I know, there's fifty I don't in town, it's a pretty large community and I'm, I'm pretty social, but I have, I would get in trouble with all the OT I would take to meet everybody, but. I just reckon, I just encourage everybody to never hesitate to call us, it's never a burden, we're always happy to come check something out. No matter how something small something might seem, it could turn out to be something pretty big. And I've, some of my largest calls or some of the most severe things I've, I've come upon have been just someone saying, hey, something weird just happened and turns into something pretty big. Also, we spoke about construction season right before the meeting, lots of construction trailers in town. Overnight, those trailers are in the metro area are traditionally kind of a, a big target for thieves and burglars. We've been pretty lucky down here, not to yell out and jinx it, but with both the schools going up, we had, I think Deputy Beam last year found one trailer that was being, in the process of being stolen as he drove by it. That's really the only construction theft we've had here in my two plus years here, so it's definitely not a, it's definitely not a testament to how good I'm doing my job, it's kinda what the citizens are doing here. Reaching out and saying things and, and people know people are watching, so definitely keep that up and, and that's only gonna become more crucial into the busy construction season that's coming, so.
Yeah, that's just it, there's gonna be more trailers this year than there probably has ever been down.
A lot more, yeah, even more than the roundabout year, which I kinda shudder to talk about with the amount of construction headaches we had then, but. Yeah, if, if anyone else has anything for me while I'm here, I've got a few minutes, I gotta get to a training here at the, at our office, but anybody has anything?
Uh, real quick.
Sure.
To his comment, Mr. Bailey's comment, speed enforcement, I know it's a problem obviously over there, it's a problem on our road, really bad. I'll invite you over for coffee sometime, you can show me how your radar gun works and I guarantee you'll make some money.
Well, I'm a radar instructor, so I'll bore the crap out of you with that radar gun, but we'll, we'll start talking about waves and it'll be real crazy, but yeah.
Seven o'clock in the morning when it's the time for kids to get picked up by the bus, please enforce speed control.
Certainly, I'll, I'll let Deputy Keller know that, he's on days right now and we have a, a sharing system where we kinda put all of our, for all of our deputies to see where trouble areas are for traffic problems in, in different communities, I'll put that in there as well and I'll throw yours in there as well for the frontage road.
There's so many people that get passed before they, as they're going past my house, there's people getting passed. I can't believe people are that hurried, but the number of people that get passed before they get to the end of the barn is ridiculous.
Yep, I'll mark those down for sure and again, if anyone.
Miss the other one, I tell ya, that's a proverbial problem, wall, there's a lot, a lot of quick motion on the wall, so.
Yeah, I've, I've done a lot of traffic control on wall, I mean, I made a few stops, but the problem is I drive a pretty obvious car, so people tend to slow it down pretty good when they see me. We do have the option for unmarked squad cars as well, sorry to break the news everybody, we kinda ruined our, ruined our, our secret there, but there are unmarked squad cars and so we can, I can have Deputy Keller kinda focus on that too during the day as well.
It might not be a bad idea if you guys have the, the trailer.
Radar trailer.
The radar trailer maybe, I don't know what the.
Did we have it on wall last year or can't remember?
We, we did have it on wall last year and worked with the department there on that, but it could be where we could put requests and to.
I'm wondering if you could do that and then just have it there and then maybe move it.
Maybe a couple of different locations.
Do you remember where it was on wall, precisely?
It was just after the bridge, I believe, or.
On the east side, south.
Or no, it was on the east, yeah, it was right here on the bridge area though.
We have a, a yearly list that goes over that, I'm pretty sure will be pretty high on that list, 'cause we're pretty early yet, so I'll put that out to my corporal, so.
Then we can see if there's some other places in town too that might.
Yeah.
If we can use it there, we could probably use it in a couple of other spots too, just to, it's more than just to double check.
I know coming to town on Main from the south, coming in north, people tend to fly through there pretty good too, so. Yeah, if, and if anyone has any suggestions through the summer, it's a pretty dynamic thing, so.
We just know there's gonna be a lot more traffic this summer with the construction going on, so if we can nip this up early or get the people to pay attention, that's better, so.
Well, having Deputy Keller on days is a big deal too, 'cause he'll, he'd stop his own grandma for speeding, so.
Perfect.
So, that's, hope he's not watching, sorry Craig.
One last thing I wanna bring up, I've, I've seen some feedback here regarding weight restrictions, spring load restrictions, are you the entity that's responsible to enforce that?
So, our office is, I am not the one who specializes that, we have two truck regulatory deputies, Deputy Moon and Deputy Hager. They've both been in close contact with Bobby from the city here about one permitting and two spring load restrictions. Deputy Moon is the absolute guru, he literally trains people in the state about how to do truck regulatory and if you mention his name to any business owner who runs trucks, they, they're, they're in fear that he works for us now in Santa Fargo. Deputy Hager, I mean Deputy Moon has been on military employment and he, and he will be until the end of May, I think, or until May, somewhere in there. Deputy Hager's been focusing quite a bit down here, Bobby's on him every day, she, she asks me, every time I see her, she asks if he's working, so he's, she's always got some work for him, so. Fortunately, I don't have much capability to do that, it's kinda a specialized thing, they have different vehicles with scales and those guys are a different breed, they know a lot about weights and numbers and I'm not a mathematician, that's why I'm a cop, so. Yeah, they're, they're around a lot, if you guys need Deputy Hager's information, I can certainly give it to you as well, if you guys wanna talk to him personally.
It wouldn't hurt to have, just to make sure that we're doing our best for enforcement, I'm talking obvious enforcement, way over that type.
Yeah, I mean, if there's something that I can see and know is wrong, then it's obviously wrong and I see plenty of that, so.
We don't, we don't want to nitpick to death here, but we do wanna preserve our roads, we spend a lot of money on roads and we're gonna be spending a lot more. And I think that we need to make sure that they stay in the shape, as good a shape as they can be and we have some that have already been so deteriorated that we are having to.
Yeah, it's to make them last till they're not premature death on the roads, so we've got, we can use them a little longer.
From, from the staff side, we are in consultation with the deputies quite a bit about it, the truck guys know our staff pretty well now. The overweight vehicle policy was adopted last year, so we started implementing that and we'll be coming back to council at some point here, hopefully in the near future with some refinements to it. There's only one or two truck guys for the whole county, so it is a challenge trying to get them to be down here, it's hard to have somebody dedicated to Horace for that, but I know I, I've had many conversations with Sheriff Johnner and their captain Holland, right? About that, also with Ross and Keller, so the conversations are occurring, we're trying to get that stepped up more and more and hopefully we can have the truck guys down here a little bit more.
I know with the amount of activity that's being projected for this year, we have a lot of people coming from different areas that may not be as aware of the load restrictions. Barrett, maybe you and your group could help with making the newcomers aware as they apply for permits and whatnot that there are load restrictions. Anything we can do to try to be proactive on that would be excellent.
I mean, certainly with Horace being our county's, our coverage area's largest community, both in population and size now, a perfect world to be there down here all the time and, 'cause they would have nothing but all-day stops on trucks and education and overweight violation fines and all that stuff, but. Again, budgetary concerns come in from the county and I wish we had five truck guys who could run around and do that, but their trucks are expensive, their scales are expensive and, and in a world, it all comes down to money, but. Yeah, for, for what we have, we'll, we'll do our best to get them down here some more and once Moon gets back, it'll help big time too.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any other questions, otherwise, thanks for the update and we'll let you get to your training.
Take off, I'll be yelled at by the sheriff, I don't need that.
You blame it on us.
I always do.
We'll see you later. Alright, on to number eight here, Barrett, you got this one?
Yeah. Thank you Mayor and City Council, what you had before is a staff request to evade a nuisance. Staff had received a complaint prior to February seventeenth for a property located at four oh seven Nelson Drive. And as part of that complaint, staff responded by initiating investigation and staff did in fact verify that a violation had occurred. The presence of building materials and items classified as junk in our ordinance were identified in the front and back end of the property where they're outside of an enclosed structure. So, as part of our process, we tried to contact the property owner to verify how we could gain compliance to mitigate the issue, however, we were unsuccessful in our efforts, so. We started the process outlined in our ordinance fifteen dash oh three twelve where we sent certified letters to the property owner on February seventeenth to verify, or to request that the violations be corrected within seven days. Staff came back way after seven days on March fourth and verified that the nuisances hadn't been mitigated, so a second letter was sent out on March fourth. And then after the second letter was sent out, that stated that the violation had seven days to be corrected, otherwise it would go to the city council. And as required under ordinance fifteen point oh three one four, we notified the owner that this issue would come before the city council today. If you like, I could show you some photos of what the violations appeared like, those are towards the end of the report, you can kinda scroll down. Hopefully they'll pop up there. Kinda big there. So, this was taken from the western part of the property in the backyard, kind of in the Big Earth's parking lot. As you park your vehicle by the property line, you get the whole view of the backyard, these were just some of the items that were in the backyard, I believe there's four or five. Uh, these were just some of the items that were in the backyard, I believe there's uh, four or five uh, photos in the report. Just to kinda give you a feel of uh, uh, what was back there.
Did this resident have neighbors that were complaining, or how did it come about to your? What's that?
I'm the resident.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Do you have residents that were?
No, I've never had neighbors complaining, I do scrap and do all my neighbors do uh, do small engine work.
Can you use the microphone, please introduce yourself?
My name's Travis Lockner, I'm the residence of four oh seven Nelson Drive, I do small engine work and stuff, I I refix mowers and. Sell them, um, I do scrap and I do whatever I can to make bills with me. Um, my neighbors have never came to me and said anything, in fact, I have neighbors come to me and ask me to pick up scrap from their house so that I can take it in for them.
So.
But it is.
You take us.
We have an eight, we have an, yeah, we have an eight-foot privacy thing, or six foot. Uh, because the bar looks into our parking lot, it's not our pro, or our yard, if they were on ground level, it'd be just fine. Instead, we get all their waste, all their wrappers, we get people pissing around the corner, and my daughter can see it. Drunk people falling down behind a fence, I mean, the least of the stuff is my junk in the bag. Or maybe the bar should take responsibility, all the smell that comes around there, from their lard and grease. We have flies on our house year-round from that shit, sorry.
I don't, I I drove over there today just to get my own perspective, um, forgive me, I didn't knock on your door, but I did drive over and just take a quick look. Um, it looked like an effort had been made.
I, yes, I took them to.
Some stuff on a trailer.
Yep, some of them into scrap.
So the the pictures that we have weren't.
They're not updated, but would you like to see my phone, cause I took pictures of you right here.
Please, thank you for coming to me.
I'm Caroline anyways, I've done this like four years ago with you guys, so he knows. So, these are the pictures of my front, the backyard, I was on the rock pile in the bar. And then I walked up onto their sidewalk, but also, and I'll show you these, but, um.
And the reason why we didn't apply rados is because when spring and meltout comes, all the bars parking lots. If they push over, comes in their yard, we have five inches of water, we can't do nothing in our yard for the first couple of months. Or else it just turns to slush.
And, right here is where all the stuff was right there, and that one picture, it's not there, we have cleaned it up. Um, they said the railroad ties went in 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 this photo, just so you know, this is not my junk back here, that is the bar's junk.
Okay.
Um, not mine, not my problem, but anyways, I have um, railroad ties back there. That I'm waiting for the ground, well now it's starting to actually be dry, so we can level the white shed that you guys see.
Yep.
So that can get leveled, but also at the end of the driveway, you drive by, I have those like makeshift things there to.
Yep.
Um, identify the driveway, the railroad ties that have always been there are crumbling, those have to be replaced, so why would I go throw these railroad ties away when I'm gonna use them? You know, that's one thing they wanted me to remove, um, he did get rid of some lawn mowers that he had, those are gone. I mean, the trailer's empty, I told him that had to get done.
Okay.
Um, last time I was in here, we had to redo the whole fence, the front fence. So we were in a hurry to get it done because to get it met with, you know, the old city council. And have it done exactly how they wanted, everything clean, so it was not done properly. So I spent a good four hundred dollars on this piece of fencing that is now decrepit and needs to be replaced, but it's not gonna get done. Right this minute before I came to this meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, it it does take time to get it done, but I was also gonna come and ask if, you know, since the bar built their parking lot to repeat up. Which is their choice, it's their property, their money, their whatever, can't I, a section of that back fence? This is section, I'm not asking the whole fence, just a section of that back fence, bring it up somehow to shield the so. Cause in your thing is nuisance, you know, I get that, but it also hinders the enjoyment of your property. So in your nuisance thing, it says about hindering the neighbors enjoying another property, it's hard sometimes. When they have their beanbag toss out there, for us to sit on the, on the deck in the evening and have an evening meal out on the deck. Because you have all these people in their parking lot, if we could just take a section of that back fence and build it up even. You know, I get two feet, yeah, I got six feet, even two feet a lot of study gonna cut it, I mean. I remember seeing a lady that was just screaming at this black guy, it was all over Facebook, a couple summers ago, I caught the whole thing.
Yeah.
I mean, I've caught many fights going on in the parking lot, two grown people, one walks out. Two guys fall, boom, the guy's laying on the ground, oh, look at that, yeah, nice, I don't wanna have company to come and watch that. You know, and just like they don't wanna come see his prep in the backyard, fine, you know, so he has minimized and cut down. On his junk, but to him it's not junk.
No.
It's income.
It's income, it's livelihood, and I think the fact that you mentioned that this came before the previous council and again this council, all we would do is ask that you. Keep up on it and don't let it collect back there so that um, the neighbors don't complain, you know.
How often are you sending it, if it's scrap metal, how often are you?
I take the trailer and whenever it gets full, the family system driveway, and as it gets full, when it's got enough weight for. The trip, I'll take it in, but scrap's really down right now.
You have a unique situation, being in such close proximity to the bar, and I'm hearing what they're saying, is there something that can be entertained there?
You know, it's up to the policymakers, we're pretty new at code enforcement, we really have no guidebook on this, so. You know, we could just kinda throw it up there and see what sticks, and then try to write down what direction that we can get a staff. Uh, I could understand having a fence and it is elevated back there, uh, you know, but scrapping. Based on the information that I've heard, it doesn't sound like it meets our zoning ordinance uh, for a home occupation where. Uh, we could only occupy twenty-five percent inside of the building without changing the residential characters, I mean, this would still apply. Uh, maybe I would just throw out there, if you're okay with some of these items sitting out there, maybe landscaping to kinda break it up, but. Uh, but what you have before you today is uh, direction to staff, whether you want us to act or not, to actually enter the promises. Uh, remove the contents and then charge the property owner for that.
I mean, I was just on my phone, it looks like it, they really did do something to clean up, and I did drive by and I saw a lot of it was on a trailer ready to haul out, so.
So what was the, I mean, did you go by there today?
I went by the front, unfortunately, I I didn't get a chance to look at the rear, the parking lot was full.
That's, I just wonder if we probably should maybe take another, go uh, through there and just see, so that. If they made the mitigation efforts to do this, we should probably verify, you know, before we go any further with that.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it sounds like a source of income for this family, so I hate to take away. I mean, I I understand like the need to make things nice and formidable to your neighbors and um, to the people around the community, they, you know, they probably care, but. I I don't wanna take away something that could, a way of living, so maybe if we just give it a little, can we give it, in my opinion, can we give it some more time?
Just a couple things, so so there are restrictions on what you can and cannot use your property for in the city, so the city has ordinances, so just because someone is making money doing something. Doesn't necessarily mean that they can do that use on the property depending on what is on this, I just wanna clear that up right now.
Is there a lot of says that my trailer can't be loaded?
It's so, so the issue here is, is if he's trying to run a business out of it with with scrapping and keeping scrap metal on there, we need to figure out, okay, is that a permitted use? Is that a conditional use, is that something that that the council uh, is willing to allow there? If it's a conditional use, obviously it has to go to the planning commission first, then come to the city council for you to decide on that. Um, what we have before you right now, and what it sounds like is, the council would like this matter tabled to the next meeting. So the city staff could do an additional investigation on this to determine whether or not uh, the property has been cleaned up as provided for in the letter. And then at that next meeting, the council can decide on whether it wants to uh, direct city staff to evade the nuisance.
Right, the second thing I'd like Barrett to look at too is, I know what you're talking about with the bar, the height, the elevated area over there. Um, you know, what do we allow as far as the fencing for that, I would think that there could be something worked out there that they could raise the fence. Cause I understand what you're talking about, I I get it.
Not this last, we, cause it wasn't this last, it was the year before, there was a girl like came out of the bar. And she was so drunk and she went behind there, so she was between my fence and there, and she was passing out, and it was cold, I was concerned. And I was like, is somebody coming, you know, it's just, there's so many things, and I get what happens in a bar, I totally get that, it's not the bartender's fault. What people choose to do when they're drunk, I get that, but I mean, I kinda wanna not have to see so much of that.
That's what I'm saying, we'll find out here what we could do about that.
Mayor, I'd just like to bring to your attention that our uh, zoning ordinance does restrict the height of fences, that that's why I threw out landscaping the.
What elevation?
I believe it's six feet. Uh, so but.
Boring a commercial business, so maybe we need to look at that.
You also have, also some mitigating circumstances here, we have elevated height.
Right, so that's why I kinda threw out that the property owner could plant trees, uh, row trees on their back property line at any time, uh, that that is completely.
I should have planted trees because they wanna be on on roly and.
Raise their.
The the city wouldn't be able to compel that business to plant trees in the back unless they came through with another uh, building permit application, so. If you wanted to have a conversation with the property owner to ask if they would be able to do that, you're you're certainly welcome to do that.
So let's, let's hang on here, let's, we're gonna table this for another tonics score on, and let's look at the fence. And what we can do about that, because you guys have extraordinary circumstances here with that, because of the elevated height in the back, I know I walked back there, so I get it. Um, so let's look at that and see what we can do, I think, again, we've got some uh, extenuating circumstances here, I think we can probably get this corrected, all right? Let's do that, we'll table it.
And I was gonna point out, like, okay, so they sent out a first letter, we didn't get a first letter, I got the second letter, but it was sent certified, but nobody signed for it at my house. Um, so it was just put in the mailbox, so I mean, if you guys paid for certified mail, you shouldn't have, because it was just thrown in the mailbox. And I get because of COVID, I totally get it, but if I would've gotten the first letter and then I could've addressed this sooner, but when I did get that second letter. I called here, Barrett was not working that day, he was working from home, and I sent him an email immediately to address it. So it's not that I, anybody was ignoring anything, it was when that second letter came out, to me, it was the first one. I got on it and addressed it right away.
Okay.
Thank you for that, oh yeah.
Like I said, we'll, we'll table it and let's work it out, and you go over there and check and we'll see what we can do about it.
Do you have my number, Barrett, I think that there was an email.
I believe I do, yep. Thank you.
I do work Monday through Friday, eight to five, so, yeah.
Sure.
And I'm sure that's probably office hours for you to.
Yeah.
I have to figure something out.
Okay, all right, you guys get in contact with each other and we'll get it squared away, okay?
Thank you guys for showing up.
Thank you. Okay, Barrett, you've got the uh, nineteen and two, we'll bring it up for you, eight, eight point five.
Yeah, thank you, uh, so what you have before you is certificate of name change, this allows the street to change the name of a street. Uh, this was kind of an ongoing process, back in November, we approved of the plat, Horace Elementary First Edition. And with that plat application, we're kind of cleaning up the site, we had to do some vacations, uh, we combined two lots, we added some drainage. Uh, also through that process, we discovered that the address of the property was connected to a street that didn't even abut the property. Uh, so we went on this massive uh, research effort to identify how the school had received this address. Uh, we had checked with the county, we had checked with the county uh, recorder, uh, and then we checked with our own records. And what we found is that, uh, it looks like through a series of plats, Johnson Second Edition, Arneson First Edition, River Oaks Estates. There are some name changes, but the platted names didn't actually match the county database of the street that was addressed to. All those properties in this area, so this is kind of a cleanup effort, and the the school has said that they would volunteer to change their address. Everybody else doesn't need to change their address because it's already addressed to Ironwood Drive. So what we're doing here is, we're going to, uh, if you can show the uh, illustration of the plat. You'll kinda see the areas that we're changing, basically, we're changing the street names to reflect what's currently addressed. Uh, so everything's getting changed over to uh, Ironwood Drive.
So the residents there already have this, so it will not affect the residents, but it will affect the school?
Correct.
The school's got the road to nowhere right now.
Yeah.
How did this, how did this happen?
Yeah, I talked to the school, they didn't know, county didn't know, uh, I searched through recorders, records.
Guesses that somewhere along the line in all this plating, that a road did not get marked.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what happened when we pre-did all that stuff way back in the day, and when they updated the plat, something got missed. And you guys just happened to stumble across it now because we're doing some work over there.
Yeah, yep.
So.
So I'm the person at the school that orders everything, so what do you want me to tell when people our address changed, did I start doing that now?
No, uh, I'm working with Mark Lemire, he's the point of contact, and then I'm sure he'll get in touch with you, to notify you.
Horace Elementary School, the road to nowhere, North Dakota. Yeah, no, but they'll take some, yeah, if Mark's aware of it, it'll, I'm sure it'll go through the channel. You'll get a memo, I'm guaranteeing.
And and we'll leave it up to uh, Mr. Lemire when he wants to change the address so that it doesn't create any inconveniences.
Just suppose we gotta take some action on this first before we get too far along, huh?
Yeah, yeah, so staff didn't receive any comments on this and and we recommend approval.
This is just plat cleanup efforts that, like I said, that's probably something that happened a long time ago and you just happened to come across it because we're doing some work over there now, so.
What do we have to do to make sure that this gets on file with post office, do?
Uh, so the the process that's entailed is after this gets approved, uh, gets signed, it gets recorded with the county recorder. I contact the GIS uh, project manager, and then they implement it in the county uh, E nine eleven system. And then, then they contact the post office.
Okay, good.
In other words, it goes through some bureaucracy and plans.
Yeah.
Bureaucracy and red tape.
Yeah, but it gets there.
Yeah.
You guys will still get your mail. All right, so with that, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the certification of name change. Okay, they want me to make some motion, can I get a second?
Yes, I will second.
Sir, there's a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so it passes, all right, so let's start the paper trail, Barrett. Thank you for that, and with that, we'll move on to number nine, Jim, you.
Mister Mayor and City Council, the first item we have for you is Water, Sewer, Storm and Street Improvement District number twenty twenty-one dash three. The Lakeview Edition, tonight before us, we have the engineer's report, this report documents the existing conditions. The proposed improvements, the anticipated project costs, and the um, excuse me, and the um. Methods of construction, and then we have a preliminary special assessment list in here too. Uh, this project is in the northeast corner of the four-way stop, more or less just south of the new high school. So residential subdivision, there is a plat that we have approved, it's been approved, there was a location map and district boundary approved at a prior city council meeting. So this is our next step in the special assessment process, so. Um, of note, the costs for the project were estimated by the developer's consulting engineer. And we have a total or opinion of probable project costs of about eight point five million dollars, and that would be special assessed to the benefiting. Properties, an average assessment, if I can find it. So we broke it down into two types of assessments, one is a residential and the other is a non-residential. Uh, the residential minimum was around thirty-seven thousand, residential maximum fifty-two thousand, with an average or a median of around forty thousand, I mean. Uh, non-residential, there's a really small lot there, so we threw that out, so it's about um, two hundred and. A hundred and eighty-five thousand, anywhere up to nine hundred and ninety thousand for the really, really large lots on the south side of it, so. Uh, the median on that was about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, these are improvements that were requested by the developer. There is a little bit of land to the west of this addition that contributes stormwater to these improvements, so. There is a little bit of land that is outside of the immediate local assessments, but it has to do with stormwater and drainage areas, so. Uh, we are flushing out some of these existing conditions and their involvement with special assessments through the special assessment policy. But as of right now, their stormwater does drain through this project, so they are contributing to it, doesn't mean they're gonna be assessed, but. They are in the district as we, as we speak right. Doesn't mean they're gonna be assessed, but they are in the district as we, as we speak right now.
Cause we could redefine the district later.
No, we would just have them as a no assessment, just say they don't receive any benefit or there's a reason by the special assessment commission that says that they are, that they would not receive an assessment for it.
It'd just be something we'll have to review, being they're gonna be-
Yep, and if this, this, the special assessments, the preliminary ones we put together for this are based on the past, there's nothing, nothing in here as far as what the policy or the, um, committee has come up with, this is purely based on the, on the past.
Okay.
Does this, I'm sorry, I might just be lost for one second. Is there, does this include the buildings, the shop buildings behind, like that strip mall area, or?
This does, and that's what I was talking about with the existing structures. So, they, right now, they would be, their stormwater runs off the back third of their lot towards the drainage, towards the railroad property, and then it runs south. This project would install a road north of Casey's that would intercept that stormwater, take it to the ponds, back to Drain twenty-seven that way. So, that's what we were just talking about with their, could be, their, their drainage area does go to the project, but their benefit would be determined later on down the line. But if somebody asks you, is all the property where the drainage area contributes to this, yes, it is.
But their only participation in this is the, is the storm water, that's the rest of that stuff is strictly-
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
And those properties are already in the district, that was established at the last meeting.
Yeah.
That was done, so this is just, there is a section in the report that I have as far as how the special assessment district was, was established in there. It's, uh, towards the end of the report. Okay? So, uh, the one thing that is in an appendix is the developer request or their petition for improvements. They are wanting these to be done through the special assessment commission.
Alright, anybody else got any other questions on this?
I see, I see two agricultural blocks, just because Merle was nice enough to come in and talk to us. Those two agricultural blocks, are they actively farmed?
They are owned by the developer.
They're owned by the developer.
If he plans on renting those this summer, I'm not sure. I know at one time-
I believe he was going to do a crop.
At one time, he was going to have some quick growing crop planted in those for this summer.
Mm-hmm. Yep, their indication was to have a crop there, like Jim said, quick growing, uh, but yes, they are owned by a developer. Um, the two largest tracts of land, uh, so that and then that, almost the entire whole half section that is in tough concrete, uh, is also owned by a developer also, so the vast majority of land on that whole section.
Substantial amount of acreage here.
Yeah.
With a fairly substantial price tag, and I wanna make sure that we understand who's doing that.
Yeah. Your largest parcels are owned by developers and then the one chunk, uh, there's also one chunk, about twenty acres, that is owned by the Catholic diocese, which they plan on doing something this fall, is our understanding.
Okay, any other questions? Lucas, can we bind these together?
Yeah.
We'll put A and B together on this. This is pretty much standard operating procedure when we have a new, uh, new development.
Yes, new subdivision with, uh, a petition from the developers.
Yeah, so. I'm gonna look for a motion to, uh, proceed with the resolution approving engineering report and the resolution directing engineer to prepare plans and specs.
So moved.
Okay. Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second on that?
Second it.
Jeff does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright, motion carries, so. Alright, Jim, go ahead and get on that one. Let you do number ten.
Okay. Item number ten is water sewer storm and street improvement district number twenty twenty-one dash one, Southdale Farms Third Edition. What you have before you tonight is the approval of plans and specifications for the project and adverti- authorizing the auditor to advertise for bids. The plans have been reviewed by engineering and public works and the comments have been addressed in that. They've also been sent to the developer who's, who's here tonight and, uh, his comments have been worked into it, too. So, this is the, uh, continuation of the Southdale Farms First Edition up by the cemetery off of County Road seventeen, just south of, uh, sixty-fourth Avenue, north of seventy-sixth Avenue. Um, nothing real fancy with this project, it's a water, fruit water, sewer, storm streets. There is a construction of a stormwater pond where we are specing a fishing pier similar to the Woodhaven areas for recreation. And we have a path through the stormwater pond site and a access down to the water. So, incorporating a little bit of a feature. And then Christiansen's Boulevard is a collector-type road from east to west on the north, north end of that. But it's, uh, just a continuation of residential subdivision started in Southdale Farms First Edition, so.
Okay. Do you have anything you wanted to add to that, sir?
No, we left it for bigger laps.
Yeah, just wanted to ensure if there's some last minute something you wanted to add.
Yeah, what happened on the Lakeview setup.
Yep.
One thing, whoops, sorry.
Go ahead, Jim.
The thing that we are adding is turn lanes and bypass lanes at both entrances on County Road seventeen. We have noticed there's been quite a bit of traffic coming off of seventeen to the First Edition, so we're gonna have that as part of our access permit through the county to have bypass lanes and turn lanes into, uh, both, I forget what the name of it is, second. Uh, Christiansen Boulevard, which is the entrance to Sunnyside, and then the seventy-second? Which is the one that Chris looks on?
Seventy-third.
Seventy-third, seventy-third.
Yep.
I went backwards, so. Uh, the schedule going forward for this one is advertise for bids on April seventh, open bids April twenty-seventh. Uh, ward at the first meeting in May, and we would have construction start, um, mid to end of May or early June is what we are planning right now.
The county's not gonna have any problem putting in turn lanes, I wouldn't think.
They are recommending it, yes, part of our approval of, is to install it.
I would think so.
Oh, and the other thing, too, that Brent just brought to my attention was we're gonna continue the streetlights north of the roundabout up through the entrance, entrances into, into, uh-
Right, I mean-
The Third Edition.
It does get dark in that area, so.
Yeah, I think that was kind of the plan all along as we moved north, but, yeah.
Okay.
I like the idea of the bypass and the turn lanes, especially for the school bus traffic and how fast that traffic flows up there. That is potentially going to mitigate, um, real bad hazard there, so anything else that we do north of that, let's keep that in mind.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments or questions on ten here?
Make a motion to approve the Southdale Farms Third Edition.
Okay, I'm gonna combine A and B here again, just like we did before.
Yeah, uh, Third Edition Resolution approving plans and specs and the Resolution authorizing the auditor to advertise for bids.
Alright. Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
A second.
Jeff does a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. The motion carries, so, alright. Alright, Brenton, you got number eleven.
Okay. Next one here is, uh, second reading for plan review ordinance. We have within our ordinance, we did a first reading for this at our last meeting, uh, within our ordinance, it refers to, um, plan review fee being sixty-five percent. Uh, what we're recommending the change is to say instead of sixty-five percent, to be set by resolution. That's the main change within that ordinance update. Uh, we've had no, I haven't heard any comments or received any comments from anybody, uh, it's a very minimal change. Uh, the next item, we'll be talking about that resolution, so.
Yeah, this was just what we wanted to do, so we could have a little bit more flexibility with that.
Yeah, so it provides a lot greater flexibility to the city, uh, if those fees do, would be changed, you're able to do it by resolution. Ordinances are a lot lengthier process to go through an update.
Okay. And nothing has changed between first and second reading, everything is sustained, static, so.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Go on to twelve, we're gonna go into that a little deeper.
Yeah. Hold it up here. So, what you have on this one here is, I was referring to update to a resolution, the resolution of fees. We do have fee schedules for, uh, commercial building permits or anything tied with commercial, also residential, which residential is up on the screen. And then we also have resolution fees, we try to combine this all together, uh, where the resolution fees even for like utilities are included. So, what we'd like to do is amend these into the resolution of fees, uh, updating our building permit costs for, um, residential and commercial. Uh, you can see on that first one there, the main area changes is, um, the property valuations for residential. Uh, there, I believe, very minimal changes on that, but when you get down into plan review fee, we're recommending a thirty-five percent change. Um, we still cover our costs by doing a thirty-five percent fee instead of sixty-five percent. Uh, there's been feedback from the whole industry and residents of, hey, why are we charging such a expensive, or a high plan review fee? Uh, this would have an impact even for your permits, like somebody wants to do a remodel or a fix a basement or build a deck. This, uh, this does impact even those costs, it lowers that down. Uh, we also made some adjustments of removing where it refers to accessory buildings. Those are covered through the building permit, correct? Which actually results into it being a little more economical, a little cheaper for those individuals taking out that building permit. Um, and then also, I wanted to note that last year, we had some changes to, um, if you're to build a shed, anything under a hundred twenty square, or a hundred twenty square feet or big or smaller, you don't even need a permit for. We did that also to simplify, uh, the permit process for individuals. So, these are measures to help the residents on those projects and also the home builders. The next one here for commercial, if you do have questions I can answer, I do have Keith here, too. Keith is one of our billion inspectors, so he can answer any of the questions that you see related to billion inspections or the permits there. On the commercial side, there is a changes, also reducing the plan review fee from sixty-five percent to thirty-five percent. We want to be consistent between commercial and residential. Uh, we also made adjustments in that top table up, up there to where we introduced a new category. Uh, before, we capped off at five hundred thousand plus, uh, so now this evaluation of a million dollars or more. And how these work is they pay a base fee, plus every thousand dollars of valuation, they pay a given amount based on how much that billion has totally worked. This has a big impact on buildings such as like elementary school, they're going to be doing expansion at elementary school. It would have an impact on that, or let's say we get a big commercial, uh, business to come in town. This will have quite a bit of impact on their permit fees. Uh, we are, by doing these adjustments, we would be pretty much right in line with our neighbors, West Fargo and Fargo. Uh, we are slightly higher, but we also have to account for other expenses that they don't, uh, they have the quantity of scale. They have more coming at them than what we do, especially on the commercial side. For us, we have to have the ability to outsource when necessary, so like I said, we always wanna make sure that we've covered our costs. And with this structure, we believe that it will cover our costs. Um, what else do we have on this one? Just overall, the base fees, uh, going from twenty-five thousand and up each of those categories, the base fees were slightly adjusted. And the cost per thousand, uh, for example, twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand went from nine dollars to eight fifty. The next category went from seven dollars to six dollars. A hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, the cost per thousand was six, went down to five. So, we made some adjustments there. Like I said, it just brings us to be more competitive with our neighbors, but also to cover our costs, so I wanted to stress that. Um, and then last one, there, I believe, if you scroll down to the next page there, Keith. Uh, we wanted to make sure this was just identified in there, we do have other fees. So, if, uh, somebody's building a new home, for example, or they connect to a utility, we do have a fee for those connections, so. Uh, example, if you're to connect to water, there's seven hundred and fifty dollar connection fee, sewer, seven hundred and fifty. Street bond, what a street bond does is, if somebody's building a new home, for example, or a business has come in, uh, they have to put a thousand dollar deposit down. If they take, they're, take care of our streets, they're respectful to it and don't damage them, they get that street bond back. Or it might be a prorated amount, or, you know, adjusted amount back. Uh, if the streets are damaged, we keep that, uh, beyond more than what the estimate is, they don't get that thousand dollars back. And depending on how severe that damage is, they may get billed for the rest based on the engineer's estimate for how much it costs to repair the road. Uh, we do have situations where some builders get theirs back because they are respectful to the roads. Uh, I could, I know Jim and I both, and Keith could point to many areas where we've had damage to the road that had resulted in significant damage. Uh, to give you a comparison, if you replace one, uh, section of curb, that's gonna run you about, what, around seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty dollars ballpark?
We've been returning street bonds for curbing gutter work at four foot increments. Anything less than four feet, the contractor say you can't replace it and it doesn't last, it's just on enough mass to it, so. We've been basing our minimum, um, replacements at four, four feet and it's, it's around that five, six hundred dollar range.
Yeah.
So, there have been a couple where seven hundred dollars hasn't covered it.
Yeah. But I just wanted to give you an idea of what that thousand dollars would cover, so you're looking at roughly eight feet of curb and gutter would be a comparable. Um, if there's street patching, things like that, it just depends on how much the street patch is done. Uh, we've had even situations where on a hot summer day, contractor puts a trailer down, leaves it there for a while, you know, even a day or two or longer, and that tongue will sink down the asphalt and there's another example of where we have to come in and fix that, so. Uh, like I said, just to give you an idea of what we're dealing with on that, um, but I just wanted to outline all these fees so you're aware of what they are. For the most part, we're reducing them.
Yeah, no, I wanna, I wanna commend you because we specifically asked for this. I know that the funding scale was something that we had discussed.
Yeah.
It was already in place, but we weren't in line with other communities of our size and whatnot. I know where these were at before. The thousand dollar street bond is nothing but change, I had that, I wrote a thousand dollar check for a street bond, you know? Um, but this type of thing, I, I'm getting some commentary here that says it seems complicated, it's really not. And I'm gonna tell you why, because a bonding structure, any contractor that has to pull a bond, has the exact same structure. So, they have to pay a percentage to start with based on the valuation of the project, and then after it exceeds a certain mark, for every thousand thereafter, they pay a smaller percentage. So, we actually are bringing ourselves very much in line with that process, so I'm very tickled with this. I, I went through this in depth and I'm happy with what I'm seeing. I really like the fact that we've paid a little more attention to some of our residents, this is something you and I have talked about, Naomi. Um, eliminating fees for people that wanna put up a small shed, uh, you know, something for a, a lawn tractor, a garden tractor. I, I mean, they really don't have to come in for a permit for that. You wanna put that on your property, you go right ahead, keep it under four hundred square feet, we'll call her good, right?
We, we just encourage that they pay attention to ordinances, to setbacks, things like that.
Agreed.
That's the key.
Agreed. Don't build it right up on your property line, right?
One, one twenty square feet.
Hundred and twenty square feet.
Sorry, hundred and twenty square feet. Long story short, you can build a neat white wall shed and still have room to go, right?
Yeah.
So, a little common sense goes a long way, if you have a question about where to put it on your property, make a phone call to the city, they'll help you. But you don't have to come down and write out a check to park your lawnmower, right?
Okay?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Chelsea, you guys got any questions, otherwise Sarah's made a motion. Now, we do a second, alright, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, carries. Alright, Jim, you got number thirteen.
Uh, yes, number thirteen before you is sanitary sewer improvement district number twenty twenty-one dash four, lift station SA dash fourteen. As you can see in the attachment, the, uh, this is a lift station that will be built in the same proximity as the Lakeview Edition. Uh, this one is not included in part of the Lakeview project because it services a much larger area. In our planning efforts, we are limiting the number of, trying to limit the number of lift stations that we're installing per section.
Why? We need lift stations on every corner here, Jim.
Well, we're getting pretty close.
No.
Pretty soon, we're gonna start naming, I'm like- Pretty soon, we're gonna start naming them like trees. So um this is an effort and to limit the number of lift stations in this area. This will actually be the third one in this section. This is the section as to why we're trying to get out ahead of all these and plan for them to limit the amount. Southdale Farms, there's one per section. This one, there's gonna be three. So this is one of the learn from the past type situations. So um this project would be installed this summer. It will have to be to service the Lakeview addition and the uh school and potential religious facilities at the diocese zone. So the first step here is just creating the district. As you can see on here, it encompasses the Lakeview addition. It does not have any existing properties to, to the west of the railroad tracks because those all are currently serviced. Those will all be serviced through existing infrastructure. No need for this. So um we did extend it past drain twenty-seven. We will plan for it to be deep enough to get under drain twenty-seven. And that's why it's included in this, is we are going deeper with the lift stations to try to maximize the amount of area that we could service with them. These are all, these are what takes the gravity sewer, takes it into this lift station, this forces it to do either treatment through the lagoons or treatment through Fargo. This one right now is gonna be set up to go either way, but predominantly set up for treatment to the SSL in Fargo.
Russ. Do you have a plan for where you're putting this?
Yes, as you go to the next sheet or go to the next, uh, go to the up one, Keith. Go up. So this is on the lot that's dedicated in the Lakeview addition plan. And then the force main is gonna come down sixty-third.
Okay, the, the question I have, are you gonna be digging into the uh river down there again?
So with the soil borings that they did with Lakeview addition, shows we shouldn't miss it.
Okay.
So that's, that's something we'll have to vet out some more.
You know what I'm asking?
Yeah, I know exactly what you're asking.
You don't want that quicksand river bottom area?
We don't want that again.
I know what you're getting at too. It's the same. Yeah?
Because if it's anywhere, anywhere near the railroad track.
Mm-hmm.
You're, you're approach, you're approaching that river that's, that runs under there.
So we're gonna be on sixty-third.
Okay.
So we're gonna be.
So it'll be, it should be far enough.
They'll be on the bad side.
Should be, yes.
Yep. Jim, they did, they did take core samples.
Oh yeah, so Lakeview addition has soil samples and.
Yeah.
But what they would, they, I would go back in and do a really deep.
Right.
Deeper than they're planning.
Russ, you sound paranoid or something here.
All right.
I bet, how far down was it though, Jim? Seriously, how far down it was just where they hit that vein when they were munking around that last time around?
Twenty, right around twenty, thought we could dig through it.
Twenty-five and twenty-six I saw on the geotech.
Yep, and we thought we could dig through it to get the bearing and it didn't work.
Nope. Okay, so I mean, yeah, I don't know how far down you guys, how far down those core samples went when they were.
But I would do some, I would do.
I mean, before you bring anything out there, it probably wouldn't hurt just to take one more.
Right, well, we got, we know the line now that we've got through dedication, so. This would improve, approve the boundary and I, I would like, I don't know why it did get on the agenda, but I'd like to have a resolution directing engineer for a report so we get the cost and stuff to keep this moving forward.
You want that on here too, A and B?
Just to keep it moving, yes, please.
All right. Okay. Okay, so what we'll do then is have like an A and B on here. We'll have the review, proposed resolution. Oh, excuse me, I'm on my phone. Sorry, Jim, I'm trying to keep up with you here.
All right.
Okay, resolution creating the district and then the other one you wanted was the resolution.
Directing the engineer for the report, yep.
Directing engineer. Okay, so we'll do an A and B here with that one. Um, anybody got any questions on this for Jim beyond just discussed? This is part of the deal that we need to do for the uh, for the improvements that are coming there. So this is gonna handle the sewage. We're pretty much, uh, how far north was this gonna be again, Jim? It's like a half section there is all gonna be fed into this one?
Uh this one would be basically eighty-second south.
Eighty-second south, yeah.
We will be able to pick up a certain amount of the properties on the west side of the ridge and take those back to the SSL. But east side of the ridge.
Yeah.
We just can't get the sewer.
Yep.
As the ground goes this way, we're going this way and we tend to run out.
Perfect. All right, so what's we're gonna do, create the res- resolution creating the district and resolution, resolution creating the uh authorization for.
Resolution directing engineer to prepare a report.
That's the one.
So moved.
Chelsea, okay, can I get a second? Sarah does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So let's move on to fourteen. Jim, you got that one?
I do. Next on the agenda, we have a diversion authority for the southeast reach S E dash one floodplain development permit. As you may recall, we've discussed these floodplain development permits at our previous meeting to great lengths. Uh what we have for you tonight is a application from the FM diversion uh for the southern embankment reach S E dash one. This is uh being proposed by the, by Chris Bakiar, the director of engineering for the diversion. The contractor will be determined by a competitive bid, bid. They plan on placing fill, excavation, water course alterations, including channel modifications, drainage improvements, including color work, road, street or bridge construction, and a lot more. Okay, so as per the design documentation report, which we have, uh reach S E one is an earthen reach of dam embankment that functions with the rest of the Fargo-Moorhead project features to reduce the risk of flooding to the benefit area. Aside from an earthen embankment, the reach includes ditches and culverts nearby the embankment for purposes of maintaining drainage throughout the project area. A maintenance road will also be constructed. So as we discussed at the last meeting, there will be no, no fee for these permits. We're going to keep them, keep track of it for this year and see where we sit as to how many of these permits actually get issued. Um they did provide us with plans and specifications prepared by the United States Army Corps of Engineers for both the reach and for, um, they do have some soil borings and some other stuff in that, some other details in that area. Um, I didn't print out the plans. They're just, they were pretty big, so. Um, nothing out of the ordinary here. This is just a permit to work within the floodway as we monitor it, so.
I believe this has been approved by Army Corps already and I believe they are awarded their funding or their green light to move forward. They just, the last permit they need is this one. Uh however, we wanted to make sure we had the structure in place for the permitting. That's why you saw the permit at the last, one of the last meetings here. Um, so this is our request and keep in mind, like Jim said, this is just one little portion. You're gonna see a bunch of these over the next probably year to what, however many years it is, so. It's going, it's not gonna be a, oh, we're going to just see one. We're going to see a bunch of these over time because they'll give us segments at a time.
Okay, and if they got any questions on that? Jim or Brent? So Jim, are they needing this then to start uh doing some more awarding of the P threes? Is that what we're coming down to?
Uh this is, I believe, independent of the P three.
Okay, so this is.
This is something, this is not.
It's just a procedural thing that.
Yep.
Yeah, Army.
So this is the, the first, first, like Brent said, the first component of probably many to come before it, before you.
Also, I just want to remind you that uh at the last council meeting, when we took action on the actual application form, uh we're watching to see how long it does take engineering to review these. So then we decide after six months if we will charge a permit fee tied to these in the future. So, yeah, just wanted to give you a reminder of that.
To give us an idea of what we're dealing with here.
Yep.
Yeah. So, anybody else got any other questions? Or is there someone for a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion accepted.
Okay. Makes a motion. Can I get a second? Okay, he does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Kate, Brent, you have six one fifteen.
Okay. The next item for you is uh for the city council to appoint a new representative for the city of Horace on the Metro Cogs or uh Metro Cogs uh policy board. And also this, this member would be on their executive committee. Their policy board meets on average once a month. The executive committee meets once a month. Um, so Horace would have a seat at the table for both of those. I know that Metro Cog has still been meeting online or via Zoom for quite, quite a few of their meetings lately still uh with COVID, but I don't know when they'll be meeting in person again. Uh, former council member DeFelon was the chair of this policy board for Metro Cog. Uh the chair seat has been passed down to the city, who is vice, vice chair, which is the Dilworths. So now they are the chair. Uh, what this group, so this would just be a regular board member position. Uh what this group is responsible for, they do all the regional transportation planning, uh focusing, with a focus of regional in metro areas. Each metropolitan area of fifty thousand or more in population has a metropolitan planning organization or N P O. And that's what Metro Cog is for the Fargo-Moorhead metro area. Um, they are likely going to, if they don't change the breakout criteria, they'll be bumped up to what's called transportation management area, which means that they have to do more, more studies, look into things like congestion and freight, a lot heavier than what they have done. Also, they are responsible for awarding uh different federal transportation dollars. Uh, there's a variety of different categories uh that they'd be available for. So they have to go through that project selection process, award those dollars and work closely with state D O Ts. Uh in this case, they had to work with Mindot and Northville D O T quite a bit. So they, the individual on this would learn a lot about transportation, more than they ever thought they would know. Uh, the recommendation I would have from staff side is to put uh council member Trudeau on there, being that he would have, he has the infrastructure side for portfolio. Uh he'd be able to get anybody up to speed with their, you know, what this entails and if they had any questions. Cause I used to, years ago, work for one, um, not Metro Cog, but another entity like that. So I'm very familiar with the funding mechanisms and all the different acronyms that they work with and requirements they have to do.
The biggest thing for this one too is it's becoming more and more important for us because there's gonna be a lot more studies done on the southwest part of the metro for transportation studies. We're in the middle of a couple right now. There'll be more.
What you'll likely see is, yeah, there'll be a lot of focus on the studies that they can do. Uh Metro Cog does do a lot of studies right now, different plans for the region. When they bu- when they bump up to a transportation management area, the ability to do some of those studies will probably drop or they'll change to a different type of focus. They'll probably be more project based, uh but you'll see them, they'll also be dealing with a lot more money than what they do now. So hopefully, um, but anyways, like I said, that they're projects, they're focusing on regional projects in nature uh and what benefits the entire region. So the challenge you also have to have is uh when someone's on this board, is they have to think of what's in the best, best interest for the entire region or our entire metro area, not just their one community they represent that they're elected for, so. But like, like I said, my recommendation is to have council member Trudeau there. Hopefully he'll accept that if the council would be doing night. Uh and then have Chelsea Johnson still as alternate, Chelsea is the alternate right now. Uh, that would be the recommendation that we'd have for you.
Okay. Well, Jeff's not the railroad yet, but what do you think? Have you got questions or concerns?
Yep.
Uh, I'll give it a try. I haven't sat on that board yet or even seen it, so we'll find out.
Yep. Um, I mean, I don't remember how many people actually sit on that board, but you'll be interviewed by a few members of the metro area here. Um, just from what the councilman Fenton was talking about, I mean, it's a good board. It's, they're fairly active with what's going on here, so. Uh, which is good. And that's what we want to hope we can continue that.
Communities covered in this. You have both counties, Cass County and Clay County, Moorhead, Dilworth, Fargo, West Fargo and Horus.
You said meeting time is three thirty?
Typically, they meet at three thirty or four. I think it's four, from four to five.
But yeah.
And then their executive committees, they meet, I believe, on a Wednesday at noon. They meet during lunch hour.
Well, he did say he was willing to try, so does somebody want to make a motion to accept Jeff as our representative to refer to the Metro Cog?
Absolutely. I will make that motion, Jeff.
Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second? Naomi does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Just, just look, just checking.
Other than Jeff?
Motion carries. All right, let's go on to number sixteen. Jim, you got that one?
Yes, number sixteen, water sewer storm and street improvement district number twenty twenty dash four, Lost River Fifth Edition. What we have tonight is change order number two for an increase of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars and ninety-four cents. This change order pertains to the re- the uh stormwater pond within that subdivision. There's some landscaping features, the lighting features. Um, change order number one was approved in the past and that included work for pond landscaping, um cleaning of some rip rap, flare dent section and some other, other incidental work to, to that pond area. This is at a um, some additional work that was requested by the developer. Uh they wanted to change the street li- uh the, I shouldn't say the street lights, but the path lighting to be a little bit more of a decorative path lighting. Um, the way that the pond areas approved in the first change order were placed, um there had to be some additional electrical work done to that because of the distance from the control box out to the aerators or the ponds or the fountains. Uh some water meter pits were in there and then there was additional landscaping on both the north side pond and the south side pond. Um, the aesthetics of this, of this um pond are very important to the developer. I think it's important to that, that area. Um, as always here, if you have questions from a developer standpoint, but these are all gonna be a special assess to the benefiting areas of special, of a lost river. This isn't anything outside of the Lost River, River Edition, so. Like I said, there was an increase of a hundred thirty-four thousand and ninety-four dollars.
Okay, we got a map showing where that's at, like I said, look here.
We don't, we, we do if you just go to the aerial. I don't have it. It's not in the change order. The change order is more of the.
Yep.
The nuts and bolts. So literally nuts and bolts.
It is literally nuts and bolts.
I was gonna say that.
Two things I'm, I'm looking at here.
Okay.
The corn main quotation, uh obviously I just purchased materials from the corn main on Friday. Um, so I'm very familiar with their structure and I'm seeing a quote, I'm seeing taxes. I'm seeing an original and then I'm seeing a change. Is this an added materials for this change order?
Yes.
Or is this a cost increase?
This, the way that I understand it, is a material change because of the length of the cords and cables needed to run the fountain.
And I see what they're quoting on those and I can tell you that copper pricing has gone up substantially as has PVC. So I'm, I'm comfortable with what I'm seeing because I've had some of this quoted recently. Um, I'm jealous as heck of the lighting standards along the path. Those are absolutely gorgeous. Um, I'm looking for a height on those. Can we confirm a height so that I'm clear on that? I'm seeing twenty-six inches. Is that correct?
No, they're, they're taller than that.
I think they should be taller, so I want to confirm that.
If you go to the last, one of the last pages, there, there's a luminaire, the pole.
Yep.
They are.
I'm, I'm not seeing a dimension there.
Four, fourteen feet.
Got it. So they're fourteen feet plus the addition of the luminaire on top, which is another twenty-six inches roughly.
That's where that, that's where that twenty-six.
Tapered pole.
It is a, it is a tapered, um, this one doesn't say if it's flooded or not. Let me look here.
Okay, and I'm also looking painted or powder coated.
Black finish, um, I don't think they're powdered. I.
Just getting into the details here a little bit, because along that walking path, you'll have a lot of animal traffic with dogs and things of that nature. And I can tell you that the paint cools typically when the dog's spine cools, because they always do and lift a leg, lasts about two years. The paint will. And then it'll start looking like crap. So something as a side note, um, don't know if it's worth the additional cost to go powder coated, but just be prepared, you'll be out there painting within a couple of years. Simple black, gloss black, no. Simple black, gloss black, no big deal, um just to keep it looking nice. Beautiful luminaires, nicely put together, pleased with what I'm seeing here.
They are flooded shaft.
Anybody got any question?
We are within our construction contingency on this one.
That was my next question, I was gonna ask if we're all okay with that. All right, anybody else have any questions on this one?
So this is something that the developer is requesting?
That's correct, yep.
And is the developer footing the bill for this or is this going to be special out to all the residents there?
This gets special out to the residents there in Lost River, so all of the special assessments for Lost River have been kept within the development. Um we're also, just to add to that, we're also applying for a grant through NDSU. Some of the trees in the orchard there um are pollinated and so it qualifies. I think they're looking at um six figures that, that they're anticipating getting from NDSU through that grant. So a lot of this will be subsidized through that, um but it doesn't change, doesn't change our special assessment that we've already been telling uh potential purchasers or buyers already of those lots. I think most of the fifth edition has already been sold, I think we have like thirty lots left maybe.
The specials have already been certified? No, not yet, okay. So they're not certified yet, but uh they are, like Jim mentioned, as part of contingency, there's money within the contingency of the project to be able to do it. And then any costs incurred on this, once the specials are certified, uh that goes to Special Assessment Commission and Council and then they lock that in, but uh it would be special assessed out to the individuals that live within Lost River Fifth.
Above the amount of the costs that will be, are anticipated to be covered by the grant and potential additional things?
Um potentially, yeah, but this, this cost has already been factored into, or sorry, like this amount has already been factored into what we have estimated for our specials, so it actually doesn't change uh the numbers that we've been uh like giving lenders, things like that.
Okay.
As far as the estimated amount, so it doesn't actually change our estimated special number.
That's what I want to know.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions, concerns?
Corey?
Yes, sir.
In the future, I think there is a requirement for lighting of shared use paths. In most cases, it corresponds with street lights that go on. But I think you're gonna find that in the zoning requirements, that this needs to be looked at, this should, this should be caught earlier in the project. That these, these paths are required to be lit.
Yeah, and I suppose, did this get changed when we went through this, this process or has this been a while?
This, this, this has been a while, but it's.
Because that path was put in, you know, pretty much at the beginning of the show here, so.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm getting at, is these things need to be uh checked at for in the, in the plans early on. This should have, now, not necessarily this kind of light, which, well.
They're beautiful.
But, but uh when you have pads like this which are away from the, the streets.
Should, should be illuminated.
It's required.
Okay, well, it's good to know, I mean, we'll, again, be a little more diligent with that in the future, agreed.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions? Otherwise, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the, the increase.
I'll make that one, you've answered my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
One second.
Does a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion here is.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you've got seventeen. Okay, the next one I had, we have here is uh to give update on special assessment policy development. I asked Jim if I missed anything or if he wants to expand on it. We've had one public meeting, which we've gained a lot of input from the public on, that's been brought forward to Policy Review Committee. We've had four Policy Review Committee meetings, we'll have another one, I believe this Thursday. Again, that is basically internal meeting where staff, uh Mayor Pearson, Councilmember Trudeau, Jim Premier State and Santek, we meet to start working, we've been working through the methodology. So how the specials can be dispersed out based on the type of situation it's faced. So if it's a water sewer, street, drainage. And then also looking into how it'd impact existing neighborhoods or if it's a trunk line for like a sewer, for example, versus a local improvement or a new development versus a flow out going into existing neighborhoods. So we're trying to look at every angle possible. Like I said, we'll be meeting again here Thursday for that uh Policy Review Committee and we hope to be having a, another public meeting in the near future. I don't have a date specific on that because we want to make sure that when we do bring that to the public, there's some methodology of substance to be able to be vetted out with the public input. We don't want, we, we want to make sure that we're making the most of everybody's time, public and uh staff and our consultants and everything. So uh we want to be conscious of that, be respectful of everybody's time and bring forth the vetted out processes and then let the public vet it out too. So, did I miss anything? Jim?
No, the big thing right now is how to address ag land. How to treat anything that's a deferred type of a special assessment. And um the uses, each, how it's zoned is a whole nother, how does that get treated in special assessments? When does it get treated for a special assessment? And then the cost of build out, the cost of getting our infrastructure to some of these places, the trunk infrastructure, the, the heart of the infrastructure, getting that installed. And um having that cost be assessed at the appropriate time or if there's a way, method of not even having to assess it, if you can build up some reserves through some, through some um charges, area charges. That's what we're working on right now is these, what's called the trunk area charge, which is the larger storm sewer, the deeper manholes, the deeper lift stations and the, shouldn't say storm sewer, sanitary sewer. But there is kind of a trunk component to a storm sewer also. Regional, we used to call it regional, now we're, we're leaning towards more of a trunk.
You hearing this Merle?
Yeah, I'm hearing this.
This is directly going back to what you were talking about and it's something that's on the agenda. It's something that we care about and unfortunately, we aren't fast enough to make changes for what your folks are going through, but we are working through it.
Well, because part of the thing, I just look at the whole ag community in general. I know the people that live here, have lived here, a lot of who are retired, whatever, and they'd like to see the land stay agricultural. But we have the situation where weather dictates a lot of what your income is. Okay, like I said, twenty nineteen, corn was compiled June of twenty twenty, so there was no crop put on there. Your income really varies. The city of Horace doesn't buy commodities from the farmers, but yet the specials are put on you and you're supposed to come up with that funds?
True, but the city of Horace also doesn't control the weather or when you can combine things like that. So I think there's a, I think there's a happy medium that can be reached here and I, I simply bring it to your attention because you have a very valid concern here and I think that it's something that we can collectively address. And uh I'd like to see you be a part of the public input meetings if you'd be so kind. I think that uh.
Unfortunately, you weren't here when they had the other one either.
Yeah.
There's other things going on.
I get that, but if it's important to you and you want to stand up on a podium, I would highly recommend that you be a part of the process so you can help us, help us work through it because we, we can't do it all on our own, we try, but I, I'm not a farmer, I'm a construction gal, right? So I don't know your perspective.
That's the whole thing. I've talked with other people about that. Talk to any true farmer, the land means a whole different thing to them than other people.
Right.
And my dad does not want to see the land developed in his life.
I've, I've got agriculture on both sides of my family and unfortunately, a couple of years ago, we had to sell. We weren't able to survive through some of the changes.
It's part of, it's also part of their retirement. Other people invest in different areas, but can you imagine just taking a hit on your retirement of almost fifteen grand a year? It's just got like, but it's unfortunate, he grew up in an age where farming was his whole life.
Yep. It, it is unfortunate, our community is changing and that's something that's really hard for a lot of people to grasp. And it, it's going to be a, a process and how we try to preserve the past and move forward with the present.
Part of my agenda would be is more so fair, because I don't really feel that it's fair when you're paying so much more as one family versus somebody else, because it's still agricultural land. I wouldn't have a problem if they decided to develop it. But they didn't. And, and they still want to be ag and there's other property around here that's ag and if somebody wants to buy you out, that's a whole different story, but.
It is, we, we deal with planning and zoning all the time where we're changing zoning.
Well, yeah, but that's the other thing, it's, it's in the whole building.
Okay, so we're gonna talk, so we'll talk some more about this offline, but I mean, right now, it's being addressed and going through our policies and we have to, this is, this is a process that we probably should have done a couple of years ago, but we weren't ready for that. Now we've got some more, um I know I want to say experience, but we know a little bit more where this is going and that's why we thought we'd bring in a consultant to help us who's gone through these before.
Well, but do you have more point on the.
I do, Merle, I, I do. I do, I get it, I'm a farm kid too, I get it, I know exactly where you're coming from. But again, we're here now and this is where we're gonna try and change what we can at this moment and that's what we're, we're gonna work on. So pay attention for when we have our next, the public input meeting.
My big concern is, is how many more specials are they gonna have to try to get in work?
Like me trying to predict the weather for you, I don't know. I don't want, we don't want, nobody wants to do specials, okay? Nobody, I don't want to do them again if I don't have to.
Well, okay.
I don't want to see them again.
Here's the other problem, you sell off a partial, eventually you get somebody that doesn't want to farm around all that stuff. That's when this nice diversion is gonna create all kinds of headaches for all the people that farm in that area. Is there gonna be a farmstead left in Pleasant Tulp?
Now you're getting into the diversion stuff and I'm staying away from that. Not, that's not where I'm going.
What we anticipate is to have, you know, when we do schedule it, next public meeting, we do want to make sure there's some notice out there, uh we anticipate to have letters out there. We'll, we anticipate to have them out a little earlier than what we had the last time.
Did you get the letter the first time?
So.
I believe we did.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because at, at one point I thought you guys said you didn't get a letter, but.
There was some other stuff.
Yeah, so anyways, we want to make sure the word gets out, when we do have the date set for that, we will let everybody know, we're gonna probably communicate in a very similar fashion we did the last time. We sent letters out to everybody we had in our list saying who owns property within Horace. Uh so we tried to get those letters out, uh like I said, our goal is to try to get them out a little earlier than we did last time. Um and then we'll have, obviously, posted on social media and our website and other avenues too. So we hope to have that in the near future, I can't give you a specific date, like I said, because we're not going to rush it. The methodology, we want to make sure it's hashed out some before we bring it up to the public. We want to make, make use of everybody's time and get real effective communication and participation, so. Uh this has also become a lot more robust than what we initially thought. We initially were looking at going, oh, well, let's get the special assessment policy together. We started even diving deeper into it going, okay, there's a lot more entailed to this, there's a lot more. But we also see it going in good direction of really hashing out these different scenarios, different situations and trying to vet out how does it impact these different types of properties. And being conscious of that, so I'm pretty optimistic that we'll have a very good, strong policy. Uh I think that by taking the time, putting into it, uh we will have a good product, that's our goal, so.
Would you guys be meeting with a consultant on that? Do you think you guys could just see if there's a way we can add maybe um some language to, is it possible to add language somewhere in those um to be able to maybe prorate percentage? To figure out like fairness of, I mean, I think that's what you guys are working on, but trying to.
We're, we're trying to make sure that it does not, it's, whatever actions are proposed are actually responsible for the city also, because if we were to either defer or prorate or different things like that, we want to make sure that it's fair for the future use of that land. So it, just because it's a field right now, we have to keep in consideration our future land use map and what could actually go there, so uh what you're asking, we're considering all that into what we would propose. But like I said, we want to make sure that we're counting for all the different aspects tied to it. And we also want to make sure that we are not putting the city and the, the overall residents in a uh negative situation such as if we were to defer and then we have to come back and go, we can't pay for this. We want to make sure that whatever we do, we can actually pay for um and not hit through like a general property tax or anything like that.
Sounds like we've got a lot of options to vet through.
There's, there's a lot of vetting.
I'm looking forward to the next update. Thank you.
Okay, any more on that, Brent?
Nope.
Otherwise, we pretty much discussed that out. Um all right, Jim, you got chestnut ironwood improvements?
Yes. Chestnut ironwood has been on the capital improvement list, important project list. List of projects that come up every year, multiple times per year since two thousand and fifteen. The city proposed a project in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen for a reconstruct of the Chestnut Drive area. At that time, it was expensive and it was perceived to be expensive by the residents. So it died, it quit going forward, the project did. So we've met with a few of the residents out there, we've met with a number of people out there. We've reviewed the site numerous times, we've reviewed past documentation, we've reviewed records. And this isn't getting any better and it's not going away, it's actually getting worse. So this year, we put together a list of deficiencies for that area and I do apologize that I didn't have this sent over, but I did make enough, kind of a lay down item for you. So this is what we're, just take one of the tasks down. This is a list of what we're dealing with, with the chestnut.
Ironwood area.
Yeah, so I won't get into all the details, but we've got issues with the stormwater pumping station, the stormwater piping, groundwater, curb and gutter, sanitary sewer, street deficiencies and um I guess the, we've got the elementary area and some of the bit of the orchard a little bit too. So we've been trying to tailor make a project, a rehabilitation project. We originally proposed a reconstruction, it was too soon, residents didn't, it's just, they hadn't paid off their first special and they want to take on an additional larger special. So we were proposing a reconstruction project. And as part of that reconstruction, we would be cutting down on the infiltration inflow in the sanitary sewer with lining the manholes. We would be looking at lining some, uh putting in a clear water collection system, which is also known as a sump pump line. So right now, some pumps discharge frequently and they discharge on the street. The curb and gutter is in bad condition and the street's in poor condition, so the water sits on the street. Water then erodes the pavement, gets into the base and the road goes, it becomes bad. So we're beyond that, so this would include a clear water collection system, which would take that storm, the sump pump discharge, put it in the storm sewer, pump it to the river. Curb and gutter, we looked at mud jacking, some spots sand jacking or doing a complete curb and gutter replacement in certain areas. Uh same thing with the pavement, there's areas where that's just too far gone, we're gonna have to take it out and we're gonna have to reconstruct it, starting with the base and all the way up through the pavement section. There are other areas where we can mill and overlay. One of the thoughts on the mill and overlay is that standard cross slope is two percent on a road, we're gonna go to a three percent. Try to force that water down into the curb and gutter, get it on the concrete, concrete's less permeable to water and water damage. So we would get it to that. Storm sewer, like I said, we'd have that clear water system. Groundwater, when I made this list initially, we were having, we were gonna do the de-watering well, we did that, we found nothing but clay. No water in the spot where we originally picked, so we had to go back to the records and try to find some, try to find some um additional documentation of where those sand veins could be. And that's where we're at right now, is trying to find where those sand veins would be. So our first effort came up empty. And that's where we're at right now is trying to find where those sand veins would be. So our first effort came up empty. Let's see here, uh, lift station number four, which is the sanitary lift station up there, gets inundated every spring, every fall and every time there's a heavy rain. And there has to be emergency discharge. Just the emergency discharge is pump it out on the street and it goes in the storm sewer. So that's not a really long-term solution to that system. So, um, what we have provided here is an estimate of around a million dollars for total project costs. And this includes the sanitary sewer items, the storm sewer items, the roadway items, and then the general work items. So, um, what I think we would want to discuss tonight would be the, is there any interest in there being any city involvement in a project like this, right Brenton? Just to see if this council has any desire, or I shouldn't say desire, but I mean, gauge the interest as to if the city would wanna contribute some funds to this project.
So, so what we're looking at from the staff level is, obviously we know the road needs to happen. If you've driven along Chestnut, the road is in very, very poor shape. And we recognize it needs to be addressed sooner than later. Our goal, you know, from the staff side, we'd love to see it addressed this year. Uh, we recognize also, like Jim mentioned, all the, you know, he just gave a very cursory overview of what needs to be done for the other improvements. We recognize that this hat goes hand in hand. You can't just do the road and expect it to last. We're gonna have a lot of problems with that road in a very short timeline if we don't address the other areas too. Um, but what we're looking at is the stat, you know, from the staff side, we're looking at the road at a minimum. And then if we're able to knock out these other ones, they're a little more involved, like the stormwater, the water, the sewer, all these different projects that Jim highlighted, um, they're involved. And if we could do like a cost share with the neighborhood, we'd like to reach out, have a neighborhood meeting to get, you know, with the folks that are impacted, get their input, okay? Let's focus on these couple areas, what the potential project, project is. Uh, we could take on the road improvements, for example, and then work with perhaps the residents to do the cost share or cost share across the board. Um, it just depends on the feedback that we get. Um, but we do have the capability to help out on the projects to some degree, so.
So let me throw this out there. Jim, would this be something, and I know this school's a different ballgame, but, um, being, they're gonna be there working on roads and putting all that in anyway, is that something that we could do, uh, kind of a work together with, being there out there anyway?
Well, we would definitely get interest from contractors who are already planning on being there and they may.
I just don't know if that.
Submit a bid to reflect it.
Yeah, I just don't know if the timing would work, but I mean, it'd be something where all the equipment's marshaled there anyway.
So typically, we've been trying to do at least one mill and overlay or a final lift on a subdivision every year. And we typically do it towards the end of the season and that would be our thoughts on this. We're looking at doing Lost River this fall with a mill and overlay because that subdivision is built out to get more than seventy-five percent, at least the first through fourth conditions are. So that would be our, our, uh, mill and overlay for the year and this would be a nice job to piggyback on top of that.
I was just thinking, so we package them together so they don't have to get marshaled out here for one event and then come back for another one, because that's.
We, we like to bundle them together when we do have the ability to do so, because you do get a little bit better pricing. Uh, it's a little more interest to the contractors, uh, they're a little more eager to it because there's more work. Uh, we also do have the, uh, the, the interest in the area with contractors already, with the volume of work already occurring down here. If they walked in the job, uh, we've also seen times where they're a little more competitive with their prices because they already have the equipment down here. So if they, say a contractor has a development, they already have a quick, that they're working on or a large project, like, you know, say they're doing improvements for the school, like you mentioned, um, you, you'll likely see a little bit more competitive a bid because they don't have to mobilize the equipment as much or they can sync it up, schedule it.
So our plan is to move forward with a input meeting with the residents. And everything, all of our meetings have come down to costs, you know, what is the cost gonna be? And on the staff level, we haven't said anything as far as the city having any type of participation. And I think that's kind of what we want tonight, right Brenton? It's just something that, from the council, that said, that you'd be interested in participating in offsetting some of these costs for the residents. And I don't know if we need to decide that tonight or I don't.
I, I don't think we have the specific dollar, but, uh, like I said, if you wanted to look at a comparison, what ballpark from the staff side we're looking at, uh, if we took on, let's say like the cost of the streets, for example, then, you know, if that was of interest to the council, then I would go and sit down with Becky, we'd hash out and Jim and hash out, okay? Just making sure, yep, are we comfortable with that number? Uh, I think we would be, being that we have some variety of different sources to help pay for that. Uh, we have Prairie Dog and our sales tax are two funds. Uh, we also keep, have to keep in mind, we do have other projects too. But if we did that, then, yeah, if we worked with the residents to help, they helped pay for, or they pay for perhaps the underground, different improvements like that. So there's an ability where we could work, work together and have.
Jim, when you're talking a million, are you talking, is that just for the road or is that for the whole shebang?
That's the whole shebang.
That's the whole thing.
So the roadway is roughly, say, four hundred thousand.
Yeah, okay, that says it's say about half the project would be that, okay.
Yep.
And right now it's just patching the road. It's not, if they let it go, it's gonna be.
A complete reconstruct. It'll just be shot. So what this is, is basically replacing the catch basins, replacing about a hundred and fifty feet each way of the catch basin, because right now we just hold water and the road is deteriorated there. And there's some other parts around, around that, that neighborhood. Then we come back and mill it and overlay it to get that crown back in the road, get the water back in the curb and gutter where it belongs.
And some repairs where the.
Yes, where the subgrade is, where the subgrade is shot, we'd have to replace that and that's factored in here.
It looks like, it looks like we've got a little bit of laundry list here, but I, I'm gonna say that, uh, based on the feedback I got from residents, because I did go around that neighborhood, um, and spoke to a number of people when I was looking for petition signatures. And Brenton, that notebook that I brought to you that had all the different issues that people had, one of the biggest concerns was the road. And I can speak to that because when I drove that road, I almost knocked myself out, hitting the potholes. And I looked at a couple of different areas where literally it just collected water. So, um, some people had told me that a final mill and overlay never happened or that there was construction traffic led in there too soon. Whatever the reason is, right, because everybody can speculate. I think that, uh, it may be wise to consider having a share or some, or doing some sort of a cost share on the road.
What, that's, okay, so Sarah's right. I've driven through there too, you know, there's some pretty rough road. Are we gonna have to do some work on the substrate with that or is it just?
There are certain spots where we.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because there's two areas that are just shot in my book.
Yeah.
But that's all factored into this, I mean, we go through this exercise, all right? Um, I mean, I'm fine, I think we're helping with the road, let's see if we can do that.
I think when it comes to paying for different development projects, I think we just have to be, try to be fair to other, other developments that have needed work, that have been special assessed, um, and moving forward, like what we're gonna do for other developments that are, you know, waiting on the same thing. Um, also, I don't want people to, oh, if we, if we don't do it, if we don't put our own money in long enough, the city will just have to do it for us, kind of a thing, you know?
Right. I think that would be part of the deal. I mean, we, we, each project obviously is gonna be a little bit different. But I mean, something like this, we would help with the road and something else would have to handle the other side of it to get it to, get all this to work. It's all gonna play together. We're not just gonna come in and redo the road and everything else is gonna sit. So it's gotta be a package deal. Like, for some of these other projects that we're talking about, Tom, too, it'd be a case by case, but the city could probably help us sign. And get buy-in from the other affected individuals or businesses that are gonna be involved, so.
Yep.
I guess, what else, what's your thoughts on that?
So what our plan is, we'd be reaching out with the neighborhood, uh, and to try to get a meeting with the neighbor, or folks that are in that impacted area and basically go through that list of different improvements. Have a very candid discussion about, hey, here, here's what needs to be done, here's why. And get some feedback and ha, like I said, have a conversation about it. Uh, are we proposing to the council to have the city pay for the entire amount? No, we're not. Good, and I don't, don't think that would be appropriate for us to do so for very point that you brought up, Chelsea. Um, it would be to discuss, hey, we're all in this together, let's tackle this. And let's try to make this reasonable to where it's not a ridiculous amount per se, but it's one of those that, um, we get some improvement here, because like I said, we, we recognize the road is in really poor shape and we recognize a lot of the other areas. I can say that this is of a lot of the developments, this area, I know interstate, they do spend a lot of time trying to troubleshoot this, our public work staff. Uh, we have all kinds of different issues that are apparent in this area and we wanna make sure that we could alleviate them. Uh, we don't wanna have situations of sewage backing up. We don't wanna have the, we don't wanna cut down on the infiltration, the, the sump pumps running, fixing the road. So there's a wide variety of different issues that we're trying to tackle, it isn't just one, so.
To be clear, to my point, I definitely agree with helping with these projects from a city standpoint. I think that's really important. I just think we need to make sure we're as, um, consistent as we can be.
So, yeah, I'd say then let's get a letter out to them and start that process to get them, get everybody together and have that conversation. Anything else on that, guys? Last one to talk about.
Okay.
Let's move on to, uh, twenty-one then.
Okay, the next item here is, uh, discussion and request for consideration of two new positions. One is a building inspector, the other one is a seasonal stormwater inspector. Um, if, let's see if I could fi, make sure I could find this one. I do have the job descriptions up there if you do wanna see them. However, if you go to the chart showing the permit, when you compare our permit activity this year compared to previous years, uh, I know Keith has put together a pretty interesting graphic there for consideration. I can tell you that this is already out, out date and this was done three thirty-one. Uh, as of today, we are at ninety-nine, is it? I believe.
For new homes are ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine applications applied for, so ninety-nine applications for new homes or building permits.
How many processed?
Fifty-eight.
So.
Forty-one remaining.
We, we have done, last year we had a total of eighty-six new homes for the whole year. And we're at ninety-nine applications and fifty-eight, he said, for been processed already. That gives you a comparison. Last year, we brought on that second building inspector. They are very, very busy, working with plan reviews and working with builders on the initial rounds of inspections. Right now, it is only going to get busier.
This is just residential.
This is just residential. This is, this is not account for any commercial, industrial, any of that. Uh, we've had a handful of industrial or commercial permits, um.
Hundred and forty-three applications.
Total.
Total. That's residential, commercial. And we've issued seventy-seven permits so far.
So a hundred and forty-three, that also includes if somebody wants to build a deck or a shed bigger than a hundred and twenty square feet, um, those different things too. Uh, our staff is involved, is involved with each of those permits. So if somebody submits a deck permit, for example, there's an inspection tied to that and there's plan review. If they submit a remodel or a finish a basement, same thing, they review those plans, they go and inspect the site. Uh, they're, they're involved with each of those permits, so a hundred and forty, forty-three permits total. Last year, we were just over two hundred for total permits. Um, like I said, eighty-six permits last year for new residential. We're at ninety-nine already. That does not account for commercial.
Eighty-six total for the year last year?
Yes.
Ninety-nine to date as of three thirty-one?
Yes, well, ninety-nine as of today. Yeah, as of today, ninety-nine. So like I said, that is already out of date. Uh, we'll obviously pass the hundred mark this week. Uh, we're kinda curious how long it would take us.
Basically, we're running out of staff.
We're running out of.
We, we are trying to keep up. The, our staff does a great job. They're very, uh, involved with this process and trying to knock these out. Uh, we're about a two or three week delay for plan review right now. Um, I don't anticipate that getting any shorter, especially if we, until we get another person and get them on board.
Tell them to put his cape on.
Yeah, and then, I know they're busy, so.
We've been calling builders and I think, uh, my loan number is two thirty-three for the homes.
We're, we're anticipating around, I wouldn't be surprised if total permits were at over two hundred and fifty building permits. For when you're looking at the residential, um, also if you throw the commercial industrial in there, yeah, we're going to be over two fifty. I would not be shocked on that. I know Keith has been talking with the builders and Caleb, our other inspector. Uh, I have too. I've been asking the developers and builders, any opportunity I can, hey, how many apartments are you looking at or where are you at? Um, based on how quickly lots are selling, uh, lots are selling all these developments before the development's infrastructure is even done. So that is a challenge that we have too. Like I said, it, it, it makes interesting dynamics, but like I said, we wanna keep up. Last year, we were at one point where we had a backlog of about a month, month and a half delay for a permit. And council members were getting calls on that one frequently, so we wanna.
Where are you at this, where are you at right now on your backlog? We've, uh. Number of weeks?
About.
Uh, we're, we're like fourteen, uh, new homes, we're like fourteen days. About three weeks.
Yeah, fourteen business days, so yeah, about three week backlog right now.
Inspections are gonna start to open up, so. The weather's nice.
Yep, that's our problem.
It takes us out the office behind the computers.
Yeah, um, building inspections is paid for, the cost for inspect, building inspections is paid through for the building permit fees. Uh, the revenue generated on that definitely covers our costs for inspectors and we anticipate that would be not an issue at all. Uh, to be able to cover our costs based on the permit volume and the creation of this other position.
Makes sense.
Plus, if material costs weren't as high as they are, we'd probably be dealing with a lot more, I mean, a fair amount more.
It'd probably be even worse, yeah.
A lot of people are holding off, I think.
Yeah, we have not seen a slowdown. Um, we are just behind, to give you a comparison, we're just behind West Fargo on permit volume. Especially when you consider that's a city, uh, about ten times bigger than us. Uh, they have seven in their building inspection staff, if I believe, and they're trying to hire two more. So a total of nine people and we do this with two and a half. Uh, the half I would attribute to, uh, we work with Midwest Inspection Services and they help us out on the commercial side. Uh, we still take on commercial, but, uh, the bigger commercial projects like, or industrial, like, uh, the elementary school expansion, for example, or working on the high school or middle school, those are examples where we work with Midwest on. Uh, or if it's a unique situation on the commercial side, uh, that we wanna have additional expertise, that's when we bring in Midwest. Uh, Midwest Inspections, they do also inspections for a wide variety of other communities around, Councilton, Mapleton, Oxbow, um, Kindred, Valley City. Valley City was their big one they picked up here recently. So they are busy, not just in horse, they're bouncing around all over the place, so Hillsboro, yeah. So, as I said, we're, we're just behind, like I said, permit volume that West Fargo was at. Uh, I believe when they were around that hundred new homes, we were around eighty-five new homes for this year. That was about a couple of weeks ago, or middle, middle of March is last night, I heard that number, so. Yeah, but like I said, I just wanted to give you a comparison of that one. If you go to the, the stormwater plan, what I'll show you is some examples of pictures and then scroll down to where the pictures are. Uh, stormwater has also become a big concern in construction sites. Uh, with all the activity going on here, we recognize we are on the state's radar. They are watching. Uh, we have taken a aggressive approach towards stormwater this year of trying to get across to the builders, hey, you need to comply with stormwater, uh, measures such as erosion controls. So if you see those little straw, um, waddles along the edge of curb, that's an example. Uh, another common one you'll see is called silk screen where it's like a black, um, mesh fence or like a, you know, almost like that landscaping fabric you'd see. It's almost like that, but it's vertical. You know, almost like that landscaping fabric you'd see, it's almost like that, but it's vertical, it's down to ground.
Silk fence.
Silk fence, yeah, silk fence, silk screen. Um, the intention of that is to help keep sediment erosion from happening and. That dirt getting into our ditches and our storm sewer system. That's, and then also getting into the rivers. Uh, this, like I said, the state has been putting quite a bit of attention towards this, they do come. Uh, they do check to see if there's compliance and if we are not making effort for that compliance, that could result in fines for the builders and for the city. So we want to make sure that we're not getting into those situations where we're facing that. Um, we, like I said, we have a good relationship with the state, uh, we've worked with the Home Builders Association, the other week here, we did. A training, participated in a storm art training to where we gave the city of horse perspective of what we're looking for, also. The state spoke, uh, individual is in charge of erosion control and stormwater management practices. He gave a presentation for an hour and a half or so about what do's and don'ts. Um, so we are trying to get the word out, and so are you seeing quite a bit more participation with the erosion control. However, with that, it's being on the builders and the contractors for compliance. Uh, anytime it rains, obviously we haven't had much rain yet, uh, but anytime it rains over a certain amount. There's supposed to be inspections that occur verifying, yes, that those erosion controls are in place. The builder is supposed to do that and then we follow up and check also, uh, so we need to be able to have somebody that could do that, that can help out. Uh, the intentions are with this position for stormwater control or stormwater inspections. If they do have downtime, keep in mind this is a seasonal position, but if they did have downtime, which I don't think they would have a whole lot. Uh, our intentions would be that they could help out Public Works, go in behind a mower, go help keep up with the mowing, because we have quite a bit of mowing that has to be done too every year. Uh, and that has only grown as we've had more developments come online, uh, the needs and help for Public Works is there too, so. Like I said, our anticip- our expectations would be a storm art person would help out with mowing if, and other duties that Public Works may have. If they're all caught up on stormwater, I think they're going to be very busy this year on storm art though, so.
Are there fines that they would, um, apply to developers if they weren't following?
For lack of a storm art compliant erosion, uh, those fines would be from the state, but they could also come from the city. Uh, a lot of times for a storm art fine, they are determined by a judge, so we do have the capabilities of. If there's lack of compliance, that yes, it'd be a co-enforcement issue and that would go to municipal court. Uh, I believe our fine structure, um, looking at Lucas, if he had any thoughts, I think it's up to a thousand dollars a day through the city. The general one is for the city and that's determined by the judge. Uh, if they are fined by the state or EPA, that can be up to twelve thousand five hundred per day, per violation, so. Let's say you have a builder, he has five sites, they're, and they're not complying, they're probably not complying on all five sites. Um, that could add up really quickly, twelve-five, if they had a fine from the state. Uh, but like I said, from the city side, we, they'd most likely be facing issues with the city before they would get to having issues with the state, so.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So I was just comparing your graph that you made and I just want to clarify because. People who might be looking on the city website, I don't know if this is not up to date, but I just went to the city page and it's definitely not reflecting.
Yeah, that's not probably the most current one.
I think that one was from the end of February, um, so yeah, I haven't, I'm still, we're just a little busy, so I haven't finished the monthly report yet. This is, I did this one and that's, uh.
So this graph here is more current than the city?
This one I did at the end of, end of March, so, so this is from mid-last week and there's a. Not eight more, eight more application.
Eight more.
New home, for new homes anyway.
Um, just for the, the people who might be like looking at this stuff, I do suggest maybe trying to get the city page updated so that they can kind of make sure that.
We're, we're about a week, after at the end of the month, we usually get the report out within the next week, which we're still within that and, uh, and then every month.
Cause I only see February, January and February.
Yeah, because we just had March close out.
Right.
And I did ask Keith to update these in time for the council meeting to be able to show you that number, uh, but yeah, typically after the month closes out. Then he posts up, okay, what is, what was the end of the month's numbers, so.
Should be the next week or few days.
We also, we also do those numbers, so we, he posts that and then, uh, the Home Builders Association, they request. Uh, permit data every month, so he compiles that and then we also submit that to the HBA, so they're aware of it. Cause they create a report showing what's going on across the metro.
I'd like to make a motion to approve those two positions.
Second up. Okay, um, Chelsea makes a motion and Jeff does a second. Okay, uh, any more discussion on that?
You guys don't have anybody in mind or anything for those positions or, I mean?
What we'll do is we'll work with, uh, we work with press, preference appointment solutions, they, we give them the job descriptions, they post it. Uh, and they do the initial screening for the city and then after that screen, then we get a list of candidates and we do interviews from there. Uh, that keeps it, we found that also helps keep it the most, um. Open to where it's, we're trying, we're focusing on getting the most qualified people. If we do have anybody that has approached us, we pass on that name to preference and encourage them to say, hey, look at this posting. I believe we've had a couple of people that have asked about it, so that's what we would do is we'd refer them to, uh, preference to. Encourage them to submit their application so they could do that.
So ideally in a, it takes about a month.
Um, I'd hate to give you exact timeline because it just depends on the qualified applicants. Uh, we've had, we've had times where it's taken a couple of weeks to fill a position, we've had other times where we haven't been able to fill them. Uh, anticipate this one, we'll be able to fill, because we've had enough people ask about that, uh. But it all depends on if they actually submit their name in the hat and they, uh, are, you know, how many people are qualified.
Well, you're going to need some help fairly quickly.
Yep.
Based on what I'm seeing.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to get.
To Naomi's point, I've been pinged as well that the, the data on the website's not up to date.
Yeah.
So people are watching progress.
And like, like I said, the data on the website is after the month closes out, then we update it, we're not updating every time.
It's, it is a drastic change because when you look on your website.
Yeah.
Everywhere it looks like you have nineteen and then you go from nineteen to like ninety-nine.
Yeah.
It, it's very drastic and so I just want to make sure that the people who are seeing, can see that.
Yeah.
It's the weather change.
Seventy, seventy house applications should end one month, yeah, that is a huge change.
Yeah.
And, and that's all I was getting at was people are looking at that, so.
And I think this did hit us a little bit earlier, uh, because of the weather.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, but they are jumping in a bit and.
We've been warning people that it.
Last year.
We've been warning people that it'll take a little bit longer and some people did get in early, so.
So, uh, Chelsea made a motion and Jeff made a second on this one, I'm going to roll call this one, guys. Sarah?
Yes.
Naomi?
Yes.
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
As we're going through that process of having candidates, we'll keep, keep council updated or if we find the right candidate, we'll keep you posted, so. We hope they fill quick, but we'll be trying, I'll be reaching out to preference tomorrow.
Good, all right, yeah, trying to get those filled. All right, Becky, you're up.
Good evening. I'm here to ask approval to destroy old accounting records, uh, we were very paper-based in the past and so we have boxes and boxes of. Basically accounts payable, general ledger stuff, bank statements, payroll stuff, back to the nineteen nineties. Some of it was useful when we got through the audit in eighteen and nineteen so that we could find records and record things for capitalizing infrastructure. I don't see any need for them anymore, they're just, um, a lot of space being used up in the shop.
So we've had an audit already, what is the statute of limitations on?
So according to the North Dakota, um, IT records management program, a lot of it is the current fiscal year plus four years, payroll six years, so I'm recommending that we keep the past six years. Um, and those are all ni- nice and neat, it's the old stuff that's already kind of deteriorating, so. Um, just looking for approval to just destroy everything from twenty-fourteen and prior.
Do we, how are you, how are you going to propose we do that and have a truck come out here?
I asked Public Works and they were talking about burning them, I don't know.
We would like, we would likely shred them.
Okay, so we need to destroy them.
Sensing personal information.
Yeah, we, we, we would likely, likely shred them.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying, have one of the trucks come out here and just load them up.
So that, yeah, we'll work with Public Works to get something out here and clean out the shop.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I'm all right with that, anybody else got any questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Sarah makes a motion, they get a second? Okay, no one gets a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion's serious, thank you Becky.
Thanks Becky.
Uh, all right, Jim, you got twenty-three.
All right, well, as Keith and Brent alluded to, the weather's nice, so construction's starting to pick up again. We were under the impression that it was going to start up in full force today, but that's been pushed back a couple of days, middle of the week, maybe even first part of next week. There is still some frost in the ground, so we do have some projects to start last week, that was Maple Lake Estates, they started putting in some water mains, some sewer force mains and the like, so. We'll have a full summary at the next meeting once things really kick off, give you an idea of what's carryover work and what's, what's going to be coming forth this year, so. Um, as I told, I said earlier, the Southdale Farms third edition is out, we're going to be out for bids. We have Lakeview Edition is being, plans are being prepared by a consultant on the developer's behalf, so we'll review those when they come in. We are still working on the water project, still on schedule for getting that into the state water commission for their, uh, June meeting. We hope to have numbers to bid at the June meeting for, for, um, city council at that time, so. A lot of it is just going to be cleaning up some miscellaneous projects, this Chestnut one was a, was a big one and we keep pushing on Adelman's too. We did meet with an Adelman resident a couple of weeks ago and got his. Plan of what they'd like to see done in that area, now we're going to put some numbers to it, put some, uh, some real dollars to it and just see if it's a feasible plan with what they're. Potentially going to do, so. Kind of a short and sweet report today, we'll hit it up again when the construction starts next week, but. Mike Furch, I think is going to add something to underneath my, my, uh, heading here if he can.
Just a short fifteen seconds or so.
Perfect.
Mayor and council, for the record, I'm Mike Furch with, um, Interstate Engineering. We are excited, Jim and his staff, uh, we've got new space we moved into and it's wonderful, it's great, it's perfect, it's, uh, all of the above, so. It's at, uh, five seventy-four Main Street, it's, uh, we have enough finished office space for about a dozen employees and then there's room for expansion in the future, which we hope to. Be doing that shortly, so, but mark your calendars. For Thursday, April fifteenth, from four to six, we're going to have an open house and, uh. You'll be getting a card in the mail the next few days, so I encourage you to come by and look at our new digs, it's exciting, so we're proud to be there. Proud to be a part of the community too, so thank you for all that you do, so.
Appreciate the invite up.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, Brenton, you got the next one.
Okay, the next one I have is a handful of updates, uh, we had Easter egg hunt, I'm going to let Naomi talk about that, I'm not going to steal her thunder for that one. Uh, but thank you for the help on that for everybody. Gascon Electric franchise agreement, I've been meeting with them, working that out details, we're at the point of letting, uh, letting our attorneys have fun with it, so. They'll be a, making a couple of little tweaks here or there, hopefully it'll go smooth, but our goal is, and same. Our goal being Gascon Electrics and cities is to have something together to where we can be presenting, uh, within the next month or so to the city council. Uh, our goal is to be able to have something, a franchise fee intact and be able to be accounted for come July, August timeframe, that's our ballpark when we're looking at. So, uh, what that would be is a two percent franchise fee, that would be up to utility, how they charge it, they typically put that onto the bill. Uh, what that does is those dollars go to the city and to our general fund and they help support, uh, different activities the city has going on or different improvements happening in town. Also, what that does outlines different rules we play by, so. The utility interaction with the city, such as if they need to pull a right-of-way permit or not, what allows them to do typically is. Yeah, they still need to pull a right-of-way permit or inform us of their activity going on, but they don't have the fee, the franchise fee offsets that. Also just outlining some different things, like I said, that we're interacting on. Um, we've had some very good conversations with them to get this moving. Uh, the city has had a franchise agreement for years, however, we've never charged that franchise fee. Uh, this is a common fee that is charged amongst other cities throughout electric providers, we have one for gas, we have one for, for cable providers. We don't have it for electric right now, so, uh, that one is in the works. Uh, COVID nineteen rapid testing events, uh, we had four different ones in the month of March. March fifth, we had a total of one, that was Cory. Uh, March twelfth, we had six, March nineteenth, we had eight people participate, and March twenty-sixth, we had seven for a total of twenty-two. Uh, all, my understanding is all tests were negative, so that's my understanding that I was told. But thank you to Horsefire for working with us on that and the state, uh, to put on the event, uh, we wish we had more participation, but. Uh, it is a lot easier now than it was even six months or a year ago to get tested, so. Uh, the availability of testing is out there a lot more than what we used to have, but we appreciate working with the Horsefire, it worked out pretty well to be able to have them come. Or participate and really push that, we had from the city side, the pushing it through social media and help, uh, give updates. Uh, street sweeping occurred March twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, we had some touch-up work that occurred on the thirtieth courtesy of the wind. Uh, I wouldn't be surprised if you see some sweepers out a little bit sporadically over the next couple of weeks here or there, uh, to do additional touch-up work. We've been working with, uh, some of the different projects going on, uh, contractors in the area where they've had some significant issues of. Dirt being blown around from that wind from their sites, so we're trying to work with them to help encourage them to get that cleaned up in a timely manner. I mentioned the storm art training with homeowners and then the last one I had is I had been approached by both Sarah and Naomi about. Trying to find ways to help, uh, current residents, of course, do home improvements. So we're looking at, is there a possibility to do a, like either a rebate program of some sort or, um. And/or a low interest loan, I would be meeting with a bank tomorrow to be talking about some other items, but there'll be, that'll be one topic that comes up in discussion with them to see. Cause I have seen banks work with other cities to do where they do like a low interest loan, home improvement program to where they're able to help get a low interest rate for individuals that want to do. Uh, home improvements like new windows, siding, roof, things like that. Uh, odds are it'd be pretty specific in nature of just a handful of different improvements, so we could actually. Have a program that's manageable and pretty contrived, okay, is this eligible, is it not? Uh, but we'll be talking with others about that to see feasibility and I'll be coming back on that to the council, so, yeah, that's what I had.
Good, all right, thank you much.
Thank you.
Um, some portfolio reports, I don't have anything myself, so I'll send it down to Sarah.
I don't have that much, uh, I'm expecting a slew of stuff coming here that we will be updating, uh, but planning and zoning up until this point, we haven't had a lot of. Uh, development applications that we've had to review, Russ, are you aware of anything additional coming?
Nothing, I'm vulnerable.
There you go.
So in other words, nothing, we can talk about that type.
There you go. All right.
And I just want to say thanks to everybody, all the volunteers, the city staff and. And I just wanna say thanks to everybody, all the volunteers, the city staff and, um, of course, fire department. Um, and of course, the officers that stopped by for the, for the, um, Easter egg hunt. I thought it was really fun, had really good weather. Um, definitely learned a few things that we can take for next year and if any of the residents have any ideas they wanna throw out, definitely get tested us.
Okay, sounds good. Chelsea?
Welcome.
Jeff?
Uh, the only thing I had was a few weeks ago we had a special assessment, uh, policy meeting. Um, it went well, but. It's a lot, uh, deeper topic than most people realize. Uh, we'll have another one coming up soon and, uh, I look forward to that. It's probably gonna be a long night again, so other than that, that was it.
Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Somebody's gotta do it.
I'll make a motion.
Jeff made a motion, I get a second.
Yes.
Sarah made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are done.